Um. Do I have um a motion to approve the open session minutes from February thirteenth twenty twenty five? Have a second?
Second.
Um, any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Um, we have with us Andy Brown. From the the management system. TMS, oh, what does it stand for? So people at home can hear.
It used to be the management solution, but.
Now it's just TMS? Oh. Um, would you like to tell us a little bit more of the work that you do here um for the school department and then lead us into the survey?
Home can hear, thank text messages, it's home on. Like, I mean, home, but it's. Yeah. They said there's the host is not on. Oh, they're not even seeing.
Well, we don't know, he can't get that to work, but um.
He's got to let people in to hear.
Yeah. Sorry about the delay.
Don't think that you're talking to everybody at home and no one can hear.
Good to know.
Hi, Colleen. We're just waiting for some technical difficulties to happen. No, not a monthly meeting, it's a special meeting? She's the one that's texting you? Okay. Okay. And everyone else, if no one else is in the waiting room, then this this probably not even. A need for a waiting room, but we can probably let us know if anyone else is reaching out. Can she hear us? Is she come? Alright, um. Alright, so thank you for waiting, Andy.
Oh, no problem. Um, just a little background, TMS was founded. And the model of business management services in two thousand and five, um, we we were doing hybrid work. On business management surface before it became such a. Polarizing word, uh, we we worked at schools across Massachusetts, Connecticut, Rhode Island, uh, into Vermont now and Maine. In twenty twenty, the company I was working for, which, oh, some of you might be familiar with Martin Associates. Immersed with TMS and bring communications and strategic planning services on board. And that's where we are today. We work with Johns Hopkins, we work with uh community catalyst partners. Um Harvard's uh School for Education, the J H U Center for Reform in Education. And a number of other nonprofits and. Professional education companies um to provide services across New England and even as far. We've gone as far as Wisconsin and Pennsylvania. What I'm here to talk about today is the climate and culture survey that we've been working on. To kind of get a measure, a take a take the temperature of the district. Um, both from a parent point of view and also from a staff point of view. Um, it's designed the survey, the survey is designed based on surveys we've done in the past. Um, some that we've used best practices from J H U and Harvard and National Institute for Education Statistics to develop something that kind of. Gives a broad look, but also narrows things down a little bit so we can. Get a better sense of the whys for some of these answers. I know that um parents have just gone through SurveyWorks and I can't remember if it's still going on, but.
Still going.
SurveyWorks is still going on and there are some overlapping questions. But SurveyWorks doesn't dig as deep into the whys. So some of our questions might be the same as in talking with every with the people we've talked to so far. We need to repeat those questions because we don't know who's going to respond and with such a small population. Um, if we get a slight difference in in answers to other areas, we can't necessarily correlate them to the answers we've gotten with SurveyWorks. So the survey is designed to be unbiased, it's going to take that temperature. In a number of areas, everything climate and culture to job satisfaction to academics to um. To the district level and even the school committee level. And we we are, we're going to grade the responses on an even numbered scale. Uh, we're in some cases, and I know I haven't talked to you about this yet, Erica, but. We're going to switch over, switch some of them over to a six point scale instead of a four point scale. So we can get a little more nuanced. So for instance, if we're looking at a four point scale, it might be um completely agree, somewhat agree. Somewhat disagree, completely disagree. You know, the larger scale, it might be completely agree, mostly agree, somewhat agree. Somewhat disagree, mostly disagree, completely disagree. That way we can get a little bit of nuance and it. Forces people to make a decision of one way or the other. People can't just go down and say, well, I don't think that applies to me. All of this applies to everybody. This is about your schools, this is about your district. Everything matters. Uh, I I know you saw some of the drafts, these are going to be branching surveys based on initial questions. For instance, if a parent responds that they have three children in the district. A response that they go to three different schools, they'll respond for all three schools. There'll be a section that's just about the district as a whole. But they'll go in and they'll be able to answer questions about hope, about middle school, about high school. Depending on the very, on what they respond to. In addition, the high school will have a few key questions about the C T programs and and their experience there. On the teacher and staff side, the branching survey will. Those initial questions will lead them to either filling it out for the teachers, paras, administrator staff, or support staff. So we can get a gauge as a whole for the district, the schools in the district. But also how each of those people are, or each of those personas are receiving the district. Because in some cases, that's exactly what this is. This is a perception. This is not necessarily the reality, you know, of all cases. In some cases, we, you may, you may put about a policy that people don't completely understand and they respond badly to it. But that doesn't mean that the policy is bad, doesn't mean there's anything wrong with the policy, that that just means they don't understand the policy. And some of that perception will come through in some of it, in some of these survey questions. That's where we're hoping to get it out sometime next week. I was looking at the calendar. And because of, we don't want to get it on April first because it's April Fool's Day. April second, there's stuff going on at the federal level, so. Leaning on not getting it out until Thursday. And then we'll run it for about two weeks. Um, with multiple reminders, we'll put out a press release to the Valley Breeze, letting people know this is what's going on. We'll also send remind, send messaging home via superintendent and principals. And then we'll also put it out via social media with multiple reminders over the few, the two weeks. Does anybody have any questions?
On some of the questions, you said that there would be a four point and some are six point answers, but why did, why the difference?
I I may go all the way to just straight up six points. Um, so that we get some nuance and address some of those nuances because some people may look at it and say, well, I don't. Somewhat agree and I don't somewhat disagree. I really want to be in that middle. By giving them those third options of slightly agree and slightly disagree, you're, you may get. We may get better response, responses to those. All the, none of the questions are going to be optional. That they will need to respond. Where I am going to add a does not apply to sections. Uh, there are, there are going to be some things that. And you can see it in some of those questions. Some parents may feel this doesn't apply to me. So we we'll, we'll put those options there. But those will be few and far between. Most of these will be required, but required to answer, it'll take people between fifteen and twenty minutes to answer them all. I took it the other day, it took me about ten minutes. But I knew the questions to events. Um, so based on that, uh, we use SurveyMonkey, SurveyMonkey says. Based on what I've put in so far, it'll take, take between fifteen and twenty minutes. Um, this is, it's, and they are on the side question.
If you only get through like ten minutes of it and then can you come back to it or?
Yes.
Okay.
How are you getting um messages out to families to to survey besides the Valley Breeze?
There will be the Valley Breeze, Lori will send out a message to district wide. Uh, each of the principals will also send it, it'll also go in their newsletters. We'll also be putting it out via social media.
Okay, thanks.
Well.
Can I ask a question? Is it mobile friendly or is it just on a laptop?
It it'll be mobile.
And you talked about um the value of doing. This annually, but the follow up surveys would be more scaled down.
Doing it annually or even biannually, it's a good idea to take a look at what these results are. And then in the fall. Take the temperature of the district, you'll have new parents coming in. New parents who have their own impressions of what's going on based on their early experiences. And then do wish, do another, and that might be a short. Four to, four to ten question survey. And then do it again in the spring. So you can see how the progress is, you you get this concept, you start developing a feedback with the families. It's also a good idea because families can feel more involved because they. They they're able to offer anything that they might otherwise not be able to. And you'll be able to focus your questions based on your biggest concerns as a school committee and as a, as a district.
I know it's going to be a big question is that everyone's going to ask, how long do the results come back? Like, how, when we know that?
We're looking at two to three weeks to get it to fully analyze the results.
Okay.
Um, it, it does take a little bit. Fortunately, SurveyMonkey will do a lot of the preliminary analysis and then. As the survey is taking place, I'll be monitoring it and kind of starting to run some analysis models to see how they come out. To make sure we have that already dialed in before the surveys are completely.
Um. Andy Brown, Andy Brown, so I want, I was a little bit late, I apologize. Um. I've heard your name for years. I know you've done a lot of work for us and I certainly appreciated your credentials, but. Um, the biggest thing I didn't know until I think it was one or two meetings ago that you're Kristen Collins's brother.
Oh, yeah.
So that you could just say I'm Kristen Collins's brother, who is a tenured teacher here, who's phenomenal dynamic, you'd have been in with me from the get go, but. I found it kind of interesting that we, obviously all positive feedback with everything that you've done for our P R and we got a lot of bang for our buck and. I don't know how it came up in conversation and I'm like, what? I, I'm like. I did, I doubted her, I I, so anyhow.
Kristen and I don't talk about that side, we try to keep everything separate.
Yeah, no, honestly, she's got a working job at it for all these years because I never knew it was.
I, in fact, when we first started working with Mike. Um. Mike was going to call us anyway because he had heard a lot of good things about it. I, we grew up in Gloucester.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
We knew the district.
You're not local now, correct?
I'm not local now, I I live in New Hampshire.
It's probably why we've never, I've heard your name a lot and they've, I know you've done very good stuff, so.
And I've been in the building when you've been here, but.
Yeah, no, yeah. But anyway, thank you for all that you've done. I just, a couple of quick questions. I think this is fabulous. I I looked through it. I did see a lot of it. It's similar to some of the survey work stuff, like I've answered these questions before type of thing, but um with Erica, I, when I was just listening to you. And I'm just the, between the four and the six, I don't know that we'd be better just using one model, right? Like, would, I I'm just for my own personal, like. If I was answering four before and then it switched to another six, I don't know if that would be more confusing for me as a survey taker. Obviously, you do this all the time, so we yelled to your um. Your experience, um, obviously it's anonymous, whoever does this is anonymous. Um, and is there any mechanism in place to prevent duplicate um entries?
It does go by the uh.
I'm not looking, I don't want to know who anybody is, believe me, but.
No, no, it 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 goes by the ISP.
Okay.
So if somebody comes in through one ISP.
Yeah.
They would have to come in through another one. If they see it coming through the, through the same phone, they won't let them do it again.
Okay, again, I don't think anyone's out there, but it could really skew either one way, you know what I mean?
I ran into it here actually earlier today with a different client where somebody was filling out a form. And they got locked out, so they went in to do it again and ended up with two different entries with slightly different information.
Okay.
So it it can happen. It's one of the reasons why you SurveyMonkey, SurveyMonkey does a really good job of preventing that from happening. Uh, Google Forms.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's your big not, yeah, whatever, but that, so there is a mechanism now. Once we receive the data and it just kind of going on your past experiences, um, obviously, what what are we going to do with the data, right? So, um. Some of the thoughts as I was looking at the survey and I I do, we need to get the pulse of the community from, you know, um. All, all part, all partners, um. I I'm just, I wanted to talk about for a second if, I I don't want to use anybody as an example, say I'm the principal of this school, right? And nobody likes me at the school, right? Like, I'm just, I'm saying, and I'm, please don't think I'm referring to anybody of. So we get all this data back. I, when, when we're doing a survey, a public survey, I think that we should be able to share the responses, we should all see the responses, right? We should all. Where, and have you ever been in a um situation where? If we're going to go through this data and present this data back to the public. When does it, or has it ever been an issue where? You know, you can say high school administration, we're not a metropolis here, do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Are we actually then? We obviously cannot discuss someone's job performance and it, do you follow where I'm going with this? And I'm not trying to be, I'm trying to just play it out.
And that, that's one of the reasons why this, why the branching survey is structured the way it is. When it comes to, down to administration. People will. There are multiple administrators at the high school, using that as an example. They won't be able to identify themselves, people as a principal. It would be the administration as a whole. That they would find and we would be able to look at it and say, okay, there. For instance, there's one in there about. From teachers, do you understand the policies when they're presented to you? Okay, paraphrasing a little bit, um. The reason why that's in there is so that if there are other questions that identify, like. I don't feel respected by the administration or things like that, you can look at that and say, okay. That's one of the major issues, one of the reasons why they probably don't feel respected because they don't fully, it's not, things aren't being fully explained to them. Then talk to the administration as a whole about how do we better? Tell this story. Now, obviously, I'm a communications professional, so I look for, I look at a lot of this through the lens of communications. So being able to explain the whys and hows of a policy can go a long way towards improving a relationship with teachers. And with the community, um, and. But we won't know that. We won't necessarily know that those aren't being communicated well or that people don't understand them. And it's not just about communications. It's about, do they understand the policy that's made? Um, there's some stuff about grading policies. If teachers all come back and say. These grading, the, our grading method doesn't work for us. And we can, we'll be able to see very quickly because like you said, it's not a very big pop, population. It's not like we're talking West Warwick where you might be, or not West Warwick, Warwick itself where you're going to be, you might be split down the middle and like. Works for half, doesn't work for the other half. Not much we can do here except maybe do some retraining. Um, here you'd be able to see right away what. Where some of those, those, not problem areas, those challenge areas are and say, okay, this is how we're going to help solve that problem of. Does, do I enjoy working here? Because that is one of those questions.
It's super important, like you said too, and and I. Cruise through both of them, just the basics of not obviously branching off and, you know, do you feel as though the um. School committee supports your child as a learner or so, like, and. Agree, disagree, so if someone says strongly disagrees. Why? Do you know what I mean? Like, where is there a place in there to pull that out? And I think part of, and it's not because they don't like us or they don't, but. Are they not, are we not communicating the information effectively enough? Are we, you know, that type of thing is.
And I, I can put open ended questions after some of those.
Yep.
However, that's one of the reasons why at the end of each section.
Yeah.
Has those three ways. That it's working, three ways that you would like to see it improve. Because you want to keep it focused, otherwise you'll have people start, you'll.
Like a dissertation of.
Of everything that's wrong with the world. So by keeping it focused, it also gives you, it'll help you narrow down like, okay. They said this is what, what one of the problem areas is, and everybody has identified. These two out of three things, and that third one's a little all over the place, so we have two, two areas to focus on.
And again, back to the professional, um, you feel as though this, this survey, this. And and with placing open ended in a limited fashion should be sufficient. Because I just don't want to know that people are happy here or they're not happy here, right? Like, what do I do with that, right? Do you know what I mean? Like. Exactly, and that's, it's kind of ruins the whole point of, um, so I, that's what I look forward to the most is kind of getting some, some form of feedback. Whether positive, negative in between, that we're able to actually do something with them, right?
And that's, that's actually precisely why I do that in a limited fashion. Because it gives you specific points. If somebody really, really, really feels strongly that they need to give you more feedback, they will. They absolutely will. This actually opens the. Survey is often open conversations in general. Whether it's a five, a five question survey or a twenty question survey or a hundred question survey. Because it's being put out by you and by the district. It opens a, it opens a lot of doors for people you want to hear from them. And now you've told them, we really want to hear from them. The stuff, the stuff we've done with Lori, the stuff we've done with Mike, the stuff we've done with some of the principals. Those have opened up conversations too, and this opens more conversations directly with the school committee.
In the section that they can um free text in there, their feelings, whatever, is it endless text or is it a limited amount?
It, it is a limited amount, I believe it's five hundred words.
Okay.
So it's limited, but not that limited.
Okay, thank you.
In addition to the results, giving us the results, um, is there also recommendations?
Yes, I will be working, we have several superintendents work, who work with us. Once I do the analysis, I'll do some preliminary recommendations myself. Uh, but I have some superintendents on my, on my team who will also do some of the analysis, take a look at it, make their recommendations as well.
Out of curiosity, what would be an example of a recommendation that you've given at other schools?
Um, one of them, going back to policy is how to explain policy. And incorporating. Explanations of policy, communicating explanation of policy from the very beginning. Not just through people coming to meetings, but putting out in a, in a um. As a bi-monthly um newsletter from the school committee. We are working on X, Y, and Z policy. This is where we're, this is the research we've done, this is, this is why we're addressing it, kind of like. Your traditional abstract. Here's the why, here's what we've done, here's where we're going with it. The more you put it out there, there are always going to be people out there who say. I'm, I'm not happy. And you can't do anything about it and it's very hard in a small community. Because those people are very, very loud. And they, it's also, they become, the outliers become very loud voices. Larger districts, it's a little easier because it's like, okay, we, we have these outliers, but they really are outliers. These people might be speaking for a larger percentage of the community. By putting out, I'm going to use the attendance policy for instance, because I know that way, that was.
An example. Yeah, but you're up, yeah.
Uh, but there were very good reasons for why the policy was created in the way it was. From what I understand from Lori and Erica, you guys looked at policies around the district, you looked at what the state wanted. You looked at what worked for the district in the past and what could work in the future, you crafted a policy that way. Anybody who was here during this policy, policy discussions would understand that. But anybody who wasn't here and wasn't paying attention had that dropped in their lap. And for them. Some people, they're going to say.
And that's a great, that's a great example because obviously anytime policy is, it's a very open, it's a very, like. Most people unable to be at every policy, you know what I mean? Like, it just is not realistic, nor, you know what I mean? But you're, you're absolutely right, and a lot of that policy was drafted on. State law, the functions, so I, not to go too far deep, but this.
That kind of thing.
Yeah.
Explaining.
Yeah, yeah.
We start with state law and what the state is requiring of us. Then we look at how we've implemented state law up to this, the changes. And we're going to keep as much of it as we can. And we're going to look at what other districts. Or is going to have conversations with other superintendents, you're going to talk to other school committees about how they've implemented it. And craft your, your policy around that. The more you can explain. And even over explain. The better people will feel about, okay. Even if they don't agree with the policy, they'll understand the thought that went to it. And also explaining. Conversations Eric and I have had. That this is a living and breathing document, this is not a end all and be all. You know, six months from now, we may discover this isn't working. Our state law may change or something else might happen, so we're going to. If you put a date on when you're going to revisit this and say, hey, in six months. We're going to, we're going to look at this. See what, see what we've accomplished, see what we need to do, see how we can make this better. And just put a date on it, even if the, at that date comes and, comes and goes and you say. It's working the way it is, but we don't have enough data. You set another date. I know school committees do policy reviews all the time, so, but if the public knows when those dates are. They're going to feel better about. Even just the date will, will help them understand the why for why it's happening.
Sure.
If a po, if a policy change happens and responds to that date that you told them about, you've told them about ad nauseous. It, they're going to understand, okay, that's why it changed, because it was time for it to change, not just. You pluck the policy out of the hair, out of the ether and said, hey, we're going to do this now.
But I, actually Andy had also recommended that we put together a video. On how a policy, the process of developing a policy and make a video of it so people can go back and reference it.
You can, you could, that, the process isn't going to change all that much. That can live on the website, that can even live in the school committer, committee area on the website. And start putting together more communications around how the school committee functions, how decisions are made. And when you get to bigger decisions like capital improvements. Put together more explainers that, so people feel better about the process, so a lot of times that helps with more support.
Information, so. For the record, if we made Stephanie, if, if um. Lori had to do the district one and Stephanie had to do the budget one, the policy queen is sitting next to me, so.
Andy told me that he already has a program that it's all done in.
Andy, I think we're going to take a quick vote to say. I'm teasing.
I, I have some animation software that I'm learning so that we can.
Is that anime, we'll let you and do.
We'll, we'll just have her narrate the whole thing.
So one of the pieces, and again, you've done this in other districts, so I'm kind of leaning on you and I think I'm putting some of this back out to the committee is. Obviously, as members of, you know, the. We're the school, we are the school committee, right? We're the, we're the, we're the top dog, so to say, right? Um, we have, we, our job is policy and budget, period, right? So what we're. And I think collectively as a district, we're doing this survey and we want to know, and we need to know this information to get a. Beat a pulse, everything else. What are we, other than policy and budget, able to do? I I think that's where I just kind of want to know the move forward. So are we saying all the data is coming back to the full committee? Are we having this in a public session? Like, what, what is the? I I'm just looking next step, I think, and what happens in other places, because just to do this, to do this is not, you know what I mean? What's the point?
So typically, I put, we put together a report that outlines all of the data, there's a section that's just the raw data. There's a section on analysis and recommendations. I also put together a PowerPoint presentation, so I present the. I also put together a PowerPoint presentation, so I present the results to the community. With via a school committee meeting, so all of you can get a a next, a high level view of. These are the results, pull out the what seemed to be. And I work with you guys as far as what you think is most important to share. It'll all be available because public record. And I'll do a presentation about what the data, what we've interpreted the data to mean. And that's how I usually do it in other districts. I've done it in large districts. We actually. When we were working with Morwood, we did that with Phil Thornton, we did did a very extensive one, actually twice as many questions. Um, because they really want us to dive in. We've done it in Cumberland, we've done it in Greenfield, Mass. Um, Southern Berkshire, we just started the process to do one. So it's it's a little different for every district because every district has different structures. But typically it's, I'll give you the, I give everybody the raw data, the analysis, the recommendations and what you do with it. To a certain degree is up to you. Um, some of it will fall on Lori and the principals, some of it will fall on you as far as looking at it, say. This is a policy question. It might also be a communications question like. But we're all, you might look in and say, but we, I thought we were doing this well. And we look at further at the data and say, well, I think you are, but we need to explain it better. And that's quite frankly, that's where I come in and I can help you figure that out. Yep, communication, it it's, I'm. I'm not trying to sell anybody on anything. A lot of this all comes back to communication and telling and explaining things better. School districts and just going back. Ten fifteen years, it's not that long ago. Outside of New England and New York, every district had a director of communications. You went to Georgia and every single district had multiple communications people. To tell the story of the schools and explain things they were actively involved in budgeting, they just did everything. They they almost, they almost functioned as an assistant superintendent of communications. They took that off. The the plate of the superintendent and the principals. But we're swamp Yankees, we, yeah, we'll just pull ourselves up by the bootstraps and we'll do it ourselves. So. For years, especially when we had reliable reporting and reliable newspapers. Where they had a full staff with multiple reporters and multiple photographers that they could send everywhere. It was much easier to get the word out about what we were doing. If a principal had an event going on, they'd place one phone call to the Valley Breeze and they'd send out a reporter and a photographer. And then it became what we'll send out of, we'll send out a photographer. Then it became, we'll send out a reporter with their cell phone. And eventually it was, well, can you just tell us what's going on? And gradually, and then more and more gets loaded on to your your administrative team. And they don't have time to do it. And I. I still see districts where they're trying to um. Pittsfield, Mass. They just had a whole conversation. Theirs, their school board has mandated that. The superintendent take on all of the vetting of all of the social media. From creation of pages to posts to everything. And he said, I don't know how I'm going to do this. And they they turn around and the school committee member said, oh, I can help. And at the other, rest of the school committee member, member said, that's not your role. So now they're looking at, can we hire somebody to come in? And but they don't want to because they think it should fall on somebody who already was already there. And you, they're going to turn it over to an administrative assistant for a little bit to see how that goes. But they're busy too. Yeah. So it's a lot of it comes back to. Communications kind of fell off the map because there was a way that it was done. And then there was a gap where nobody was filling that role really well. And now it's become a necessity. COVID kind of proved that. And now I've just given you a whole history lesson on communications in in schools in New England.
Does anyone else have any questions? Anyone from the community have any questions?
I just want to say thank you for doing the survey, um, for listening to our feedback and the teachers' feedback. I appreciate it. I know. My parents appreciate that as well. Um, I would ask, so I I'm glad.
I am going to ask you to go to the mic, the Bobby, sorry.
So so I'm I'm thankful that you guys are just listening to information.
Yeah.
And I'm thankful and um I am looking forward to the, you know, the results and what you guys kind of take, take away from this. I do understand, I think many of us appreciate. The professionalism that this survey responses have to be dealt with in, in that you're not trying to. Bring anybody at the stake here, but it's really how do we coach and develop uh our leaders in the organization or. Improve communication plans or things to that effect. So I I am appreciative of that. I would just like to kind of put an asterisk next to. How do people consume information? Because, you know, I I will say even just the, you know, the um. The email blast, and then you have to click into the links to say, okay, let me open up, you know, like. Some people are looking at their on their mobile phones and not clicking into all these different things for these these meetings. And so it becomes. To your point, how do you deliver a clear, concise message that shares, that shares the intel that people need to do in a moment's notice? Without clicking through and all and all this other stuff. And so. Inherently, government operations and like committee meetings and all of these things. It's a link to a website and inside that website is the is the meeting minutes and inside the meeting minutes is this link and is this link. And some people are trying to consume all that and they're trying to say, what is actually happening in this in this meeting? So how do you deliver? Maybe some of the results in a clear, concise way for us to actually consume it and appreciate it in a way that makes sense to us. You mentioned the Valley Breeze. I I have never had a paper shipped to to my home ever. Um, nor do I look at the Valley Breeze online. Uh Lori, you live in Connecticut, you said, I didn't even know. Uh Padlerini had made it because I don't get Rhode Island news, right?
I knew she made it.
No, she made it, but yeah. I'm just saying, right? So how people consume information is how we should look at this as well, because. The Valley Breeze notification, I, you know, what is that? And my husband spends a lot of money on advertising and how much is that going to cost us to do that? And is that really? Does that warrant? Uh, you know, I don't know. Again, this is not my forte. Okay. Okay, well, then then it doesn't cost anything. Even better. But just, I would say, how do we consume the information? How do we get it out in a way that people? See it? That would be would be our ask.
So, yeah, and I think I kind of touched on, so back in the day, um.
And just want to say, oh, name and address.
Oh, Bobby Collado, Nine Brett Drive.
I can say it for you next time. I I knew it was, I just said, no, the nine, it was Brett Drive. So again. Back where I I grew up in North Smithfield, so there used to be a the one socket call, like there was a daily paper, everybody got the, well, if you lived here, it was a Smithfield time, like. Those are, back to your points of the Valley Breeze, to my knowledge, the Pro Joes, there's no. No one gets the paper delivered anymore, nobody, right? So the Valley Breeze, and I'm with you, some people are like. Don't even look at it, don't even.
Why not?
And you know, exactly, but it's kind of like really the only like, and it's once a week and it's like local publication. That that there is to do it, but I think that's just kind of like on an outlier piece. My thought would be just like when we're doing survey works or anything like that, the biggest message, obviously. It's going to be pretty easy to communicate this to our staff, not concerned about that, right? We have pretty direct communication with. Um, but for the the families, I think the biggest piece is just like every other piece of information as parents that we receive. It's going to be directly through our principals messaging, do you know what I mean? That type of way so that everyone is aware of the survey and. Thinking of that, it phrasing it. So sometimes when you get, I get it, you're like, oh, here we go, here we go, right? Like. No, but do we, do we preface this somehow? And I'm thinking a lot as you're saying this, do we preface this through our um principals, they all do their net newsletters, Lori does a letter, the school, like. Do we preface this somehow about? This is this, we're doing this in situ. This isn't a state mandate. This isn't, do you know what I mean? Like, there's so many things that we just do because we have to do them. Oh, get a hundred percent participation because they want to know this. We like. Maybe there is some messaging around that when we send these out to say, like, we're looking for the most honest. Good and bad feedback that we can get to bring it directly to from the stakeholders to the whole team. Does that make sense?
That that's the kind of messaging that I'll put. Letting them bring together for the press release, but also messaging to go in the different letters. And it's going to be told to the to the principals, this needs to be at the very top of their newsletter.
Yep.
It's not, it's it's that important.
Yeah.
And it's that important to the district to get this information. And that's part of that messaging. We're being proactive. We're interested in what you, how you feel about the district, what your perceptions are.
Like, and and I just to go back, it's not, this is not mandated by anybody. There's so many things that we do just to check off, like you see them, oh, they got salt survey a hundred percent, like. But what does that do? Like, I don't know, no offense to any of that, do you know what I mean? But like, this is, we we want this, we want. Your feedback. So, yeah, I think that that is important. I think the most, the primary messaging is going to come directly from the schools, right? And the standardized message too, like if you're formulating something that could be kind of disseminated out through the principals in that same.
The message will be the same and could sit, not the same, but consistent throughout every kind of men, every time we put it out there, whether it's. Via social media, whether it's via the Valley Breeze, whether it's via a newsletter, whether it's via a text home. I mean, that's another option that we can, we can, we can use, we can send it home via text and then it's just click through, you're already on your phone and you can.
Yeah.
Straight to it. But I think one of your points was that in general with communications. You need something more consumable than having to dig in deep for the minutes for everything else.
And that's. That what I was trying to say was that we have to, we have to understand that people's responses to this are going to be perception, perception in some instances. It's going to be a reality, right? But how we, or how how you bucket up the feedback? You know, that will be important to us, right? So it's not this. It like, what are the actions that you that are being taken to your, to your earlier point? Like, hey, we need to communicate more around this. Sorry. We have to communicate more around this or, hey, there is a challenge with. Culture and morale here, and here's what we're trying to do to solve that. Like, I think that. I like, you're going to get a lot of information from here and whether or not some of it is true or factual or not, that's that's going to be up for you guys to. To sift through and decide, but I hope that it gives um. Some of the administration and the teachers a voice. You you know, good and bad, but that we can, we can learn, we can, we can learn from that too, and making everybody better. Or sharing better or hearing different pieces of information more frequently because we're not, we're not. It's not hitting us, you know, because what's going through? And that's what I'm trying to say. It's 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 a link in a document that I haven't clicked into the link. I just skimmed the document. You know, so how do we like put more things at the top?
So we have Andy.
CTE program in Situance or Communications, I guess.
That's next.
Um, if, is there anybody at home that wants to ask a question? Okay. Well, thank you so much for coming and um. I assume if anyone on the school committee has any further follow up questions, I can always reach out to you individually. Yeah, thank you. So it is quarter to seven or thereabouts. Um, so we have about fifteen minutes to break before we start the budget. Part of the meeting, I don't want to start that anytime before seven in case people are still on their way. So we'll just take a little fifteen minute break and then we will be back at seven promptly to start our budget meeting. Thanks. Thanks.
Thank you.
So we will continue on with our meeting. For the budget workshop. Hopefully it'll be coming. Oh, there you go. Just make over. Well, that's the uh capital one and we'll need the. The other one up. And once that's up, then we can start. The what's in our packets a little bit different than what we got in our. File, is that correct? It's a little bit tweaked. The one that I have on the table in print is a little bit different, a little more information, not different information.
Yeah, there might be more. Okay.
So probably have to um.
Whatever you have in front of you is correct. They have the same thing that everyone else has. Yeah, everything's updated. Yep.
Can you download those and rotate them? Okay. I downloaded mine and rotated them. We can get started. I am.
Good evening. Um, I'm going to uh start um. By making a few uh comments about the budget that you have in front of you. And then I'm going to turn it over to Stephanie and she's going to walk you through. Um, the lines and the changes and the percentages. And answer all those um numbers uh questions that you probably have. So as we begin, I want to first thank Stephanie and the team for spending endless hours scrubbing the numbers you have before you. Um, every line item was examined and discussed, which resulted in savings that allowed us to lower. The request for the local appropriation to a very reasonable two point five four percent increase. This was an important exercise for us knowing that our town has limited revenue resources. And is bound by the state mandate of four percent budget increase caps. With that said, this budget only works if our governors propose twenty twenty six state education aid numbers old. As we've discussed many times, this number is a moving target. You'll hear from Stephanie that it is subject to change slightly this month due to new enrollment numbers. My greatest concern is that it is sustained at this level during the legislative. Legislative process proves especially as they are grappling with closing a deep projected statewide deficit. I'm bringing this to your attention because this budget still includes a significant overall increase of over six percent. Due to the major cost drivers mostly out of our control and discussed at our last meeting. Those being special ed, transportation and contractual personnel increases. To offset these increases, decisions were made to include very conservative numbers in healthcare. Turnover savings and a two point five COLA increases. While preserving our highest priorities in curriculum and instruction. There are still some opportunities for some modest savings for the school committee to consider. After Stephanie goes through the budget categories. These opportunities are specifically around FTEs as we discussed at our last workshop. I'm now going to turn it over to Stephanie to go over the latest budget proposal for your consideration.
Going to do a lot of talkings. I'm going to try to talk slow. This proposal has a local appropriation request, as Lori said, of twenty two million eight hundred eighty nine thousand eight hundred seventy dollars. It's a two point five four percent. Over last year's appropriation. This equates to five hundred eighty one thousand three hundred thirty nine dollars. This proposal is one hundred sixty six thousand two hundred eighty nine dollars less in appropriation than the prior proposal from our last meeting. At three point three five percent or a decrease of point six percent.
So step one more time. It was three point five and now we're at.
Two point five four. Thankfully, the governor's proposed budget includes a significant increase in our state aid revenue. This allowed us to keep the local appropriation request very reasonable, under three percent. Our overall operational budget increased by six point three four percent or one million seven hundred six thousand one hundred and seven dollars. There are significant cost drivers behind these increases that I will discuss as I take you through each spending category. I do want to start with revenue though. Looking at the revenue page, I'd like to discuss first state education aid. After speaking with Ryan and reviewing our R A D M state calculated report in E-Ride. It looks as though our state aid will be caught approximately eighteen thousand three hundred sixty dollars based on a drop of five of our students from our prior calculated number. This is a projection based on the information available to me and we will not have improved number from legislation until June. The state aid number in front of you tonight reflects this average daily membership decrease. Although our state aid revenue is projected high at this time, it is critical to our ability to be able to come in at the low percentage of over local appropriation. That we are proposing. Had this number been lower, we would have never been able to come in at this percentage.
So that with deduction, the eighteen thousand deduction is already in this number?
Yes.
Just touch on that button. I don't want to go too deep. So we're. The number based on. Per, I used the number, the thing that I'll be. So, but that's like your, your, your student census. So based on a decline in student census. Our, we, we are losing eighteen thousand. However, the total appropriation coming forward is seven hundred thousand dollars more. Explain that. It, it, that's based on the new formula of, is, am I saying that correct?
Yes, so um. And I believe it was us this year who was on, they do it on a three year scale where they reevaluate different departments or uh. Districts.
Yeah.
Um, and we were on that three year. So they kind of said, oh, hey. Market value, it's based on a bunch of different items, quadratic formula. We'll take it.
Uh, yeah, exactly. So it's just um decreased population and a seven hundred thousand dollar increase makes me very nervous.
Yes.
And I know that was the first thing that came out of your mouth, Lori, when you said it, like I, I, this isn't money in the bank yet.
Right.
Right?
It's not money in the bank for this year and the real question is, and superintendents have this conversation with Ride. And with the legislature constantly, we need some stability in the funding.
How do you change that? Like what happens?
We can't go up and down in the.
Eighteen thousand dollars, yes, we can't, right?
And it could be more because it's not finalized yet.
I just kind of wanted to get that out a little bit. Thank you.
Our CTE revenue has a proposed fifteen of twenty one applicants or seventy one point four two percent of students applied to our incoming number.
Are you on a different page?
Nope, I'm talking about.
Are you, are you doing like a recap and then we're going to go?
I'm just talking about the CTE revenue though.
Is that on my base page?
Yep, it's under tuition. Sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You may proceed.
I forget where I was.
I'm sorry.
Um, so that's seventy one point four two percent of students applied to our incoming number based on trends. This is approximately two hundred forty seven thousand one hundred thirty nine dollars in revenue. Our current fifty five CTE students for FY twenty twenty six, and that's after aging out seniors, is approximately nine hundred twenty thousand five hundred thirty eight dollars in revenue. Together that makes seventy students and one million one hundred sixty seven thousand six hundred seventy seven dollars. Please note that these rates are based on FY twenty five rates as the FY twenty six rates are, are not out yet. Please also keep in mind that this is a proposal and a moving target that can change. This revenue is offset by our outgoing CTE students and their transportation costs. We have forty outgoing CTE students totaling seven hundred seventy eight thousand seven hundred sixty dollars, which you'll see when we get to tuitions and expenditures. Transportation for these students is approximately a hundred and seventy one thousand four hundred sixty dollars. So after these offsets, we're looking at about two hundred seventeen thousand four hundred fifty seven dollars in non-offset revenue for tuitions.
On revenue step, um, the calculations, and I know I've said that I keep saying it and I'll keep saying it again. We used a conservative estimate for CTE students because we ended up with a big old hole in the past. Trying to be too zealous and we've already gained so much. I, I, and again, I have every confidence. I just want. Everyone feels confident that we'll meet the numbers that are in this budget without closing a budget hole by saying, I'll throw another five CTE kids in there, right?
Around the CTE numbers, yes.
Yes, yes, yes. Thank you.
I'll move to salaries if that's okay. Our salaries have an aggressive three percent turnover number in them, which equates to four hundred sixty six thousand one hundred twenty two dollars. The proposed budget has the math coach in it, a new K teacher and no changes to the second grade classroom. Districtwide alone in salaries inclusive of ADI and FY twenty twenty six. Contractual COLAs were equivalent to approximately three hundred eighty four thousand seven hundred seventy three dollars. And contractual steps are approximately ninety eight thousand one hundred thirty dollars. That totals four hundred eighty two thousand nine hundred three dollars. The variance between our projected FY twenty twenty five end and our FY twenty twenty six budget is the four hundred eighty two thousand nine hundred three dollars and the cost of the. Proposed new FTEs.
So that was the math coach.
Math coach, new K teacher and no changes um to anywhere else.
Which I think, uh, at this point. At some point in the budget, I think we need to talk about the FT, like the whole FTE piece and how, not necessarily here, but.
Definitely.
Right, thanks.
I'm gonna jump to benefits, if that's okay. Healthcare is increasing seven to ten percent in FY twenty twenty-six. In the prior budget proposal, I had originally proposed a conservative eight percent increase in healthcare over our projected expense this year. Oh, I'm sorry. This proposal has healthcare lowered to a seven percent increase off of our prior budget amount instead of an eight percent increase over our projected FY twenty twenty-five amount. Please note that with WB projecting seven to ten percent, this is a very conservative number. I'm just gonna move to purchased and professional services, if that's okay.
When do we find out from WB what the actual percentage is?
So we, we can tell them what percent we.
Well, they're just recommending.
So ours are claim-based, right? A lot, yeah.
Experiences, right.
Hmm. Hold on, um, on that benefit still certified retirement. That's out of our control, correct?
Yep.
And um does that's dictated to us?
That's correct.
Bear with me. That's up two hundred and thirty thousand?
So when salaries increase, it's off the salary as well. Um, certified retirement went from fifteen point five four percent to fifteen point ten percent, so even though it went down, our salaries are going up.
So that isn't an added two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, right? Plus, okay.
Yeah, it's a percentage increase on, on the salary total, right? That's how it's figured.
Any questions on benefits?
Um, with the health premiums, I noticed that that number was brought down from the last proposed budget. How were you able to achieve that safely?
So um I had s- kinda said that I was at eight percent and then.
That's where that came from?
Seven percent, but also um I had budgeted off our um proj- our projected expense, so our true expense. And in order to get it that well, I had to budget off our budget last year.
So there's a.
So there is the very conservative. That is one of those places where we made strategic cuts knowing there's the potential that that line could be in trouble next year.
So we're starting at the very lowest possible recommended.
That's correct.
Seven percent, anywhere between seven and ten.
We went with the lowest on our budgeted, not on our expenses.
Which is dangerous.
That's why it got, it got dropped three hundred and sixty thousand.
It is dangerous.
Right, it looked, from the last, it looks like a three hundred and sixty thousand dollar difference from the last meeting just by crossing our fingers that maybe it'll be seven percent, not eight or nine or ten.
Depends on the claims that we have.
So and I, I think just for, I think just to, um, so everyone understands, it's not uh for our insurance premiums, it's not, you know, I have a hundred employees that we pay five hundred dollars a year for and someone else is insuring us. We're self-insured in the sense that it's claims-based, so this variable ranges greatly based on what could happen in a given year.
Correct, it's based on what our claims are, so.
It's not one of those solid numbers you can say when it's, okay, this person makes this amount of money, I have to pay fourteen percent in their pension or whatever it be.
That's why Stephanie and I originally based it off uh what we're paying this year, what our core actual costs are. Because we are not necessarily anticipating that the healthcare costs um that we incur as a district will go down next year. Now we cut it, so we gotta hope that they do.
And that was how much, Stephanie, just a number, three, three?
I don't have the exact number.
So it was cut by one percent, it went from, from eight to seven.
I can pull up.
And it's, it's three hundred and rounded up, three hundred and sixty thousand. It's actually three fifty-nine to three twenty-one. So three sixty. I just wanted to point that out, that's the ver- you know, the variables that we can't control um and while it looks better on paper, we have to be aware that it's not a real number.
It's one of those decisions that Stephanie and I made when going through, trying to get this budget down to where the committee told us they, you know, wanted us to try to land and there aren't a lot of places for us to be able to make those uh kind of cuts. You know, we're a small district, the numbers are tight, so um when Stephanie talks to you about what the drivers are, most of the drivers around this budget are things we don't have any control over. So in the few places where we do have some,
but we don't, right? Like that's all we really know. I, I think if maybe we can, just my thought, get, because I think we have to come back to this, because I don't know that we as a committee and, and we want your feedback as well, like, I know you're working as charge, bring it down, bring it down. But is this the best place to do it? Because we're gonna end up in a, with a big, like, if this is what our expense was, oh, let's just, like, why aren't we basing it on that? That's usually how a budget is done, right? So I, I, I'm not trying, we're talking out of two sides of our mouth, but I own, you can only achieve what we tell you to do, so I don't know that that is the best place to do it at that sum of amount, my thoughts, but I think maybe. Yes.
We're gonna show you where we made those decisions as we go through, and this is your budget, so you can ultimately tell us to go back and, and do what, what your wishes are.
Any more questions on benefits?
No.
Proposed changes in purchased and professional services. Um, I just wanted to mention that the bus assistants and monitors were brought back up to the salary line for proper comparison year to year. Just, that's just UCOA correctly coding it. I just figured you'd see that move and I wanted to address it. Proposed cuts after our last meeting were made to legal services and conferences and workshops. That's the only change um from last time.
And there was an increase in the diagnosticians from the last meeting, fifty thousand?
Sorry, I'm just bringing up the old one. Oh, yep, to level fund. Sorry, I meant like material.
So it's an increase of fifty. But we have a decrease of like almost a hundred and thirty in the bus monitors, because it was zero, then it went, how come that was zero, then it was brought back?
So I had said that um we brought it into the salary line, because that's where it always lived.
Oh, maybe you took it out of call.
And I was just trying to show it initially when we had that big budget so that everybody understood that that, you know, but I, I have to realize that sometimes showing the UCOA to everyone, nobody really, you know, they just show it where it was, and I'll just keep the UCOA to myself.
Hold on one second.
I have a question. If we um had a decrease of uh special ed students, now I don't know whether they were ones that were receiving therapies, so should their income be expected to be decreased as well?
Talking about the diagnostician line?
Correct, well, the, the, uh, yeah, diagnostician and also the occupational therapist, it's listed there.
So it all depends on.
Students, you can just be able to know which students they were, did they, what services they received.
Right.
Yeah, we are not seeing a decrease in special ed students or a decrease in um.
ABC or diagnostic.
You said we decreased special ed students and that's why we had a decrease in income from this.
No, not special ed students, a decrease in um students, yeah, overall. Not specific, they don't, they don't uh they don't uh provide funds based on um student uh identification or category. It's just a per student.
Average daily membership.
I must have written it down wrong, because I wrote down decrease in special ed students, or specifically, okay? All right.
Property services. After our prior meeting, um, there were cuts to graduation rentals, which was level funded, and purchased in property services that were lowered just four thousand nine hundred dollars after closely examining year-over-year expenses and outlying specific year-needed expenses.
There's very little change to this.
Other purchase services. Based on our most current information, oh, sorry. Based on our most current information regarding first student statewide and athletic transportation, four hundred three thousand nine hundred fifty-one dollars of this line is for statewide alone in FY twenty twenty-six. One hundred seven thousand seven hundred eighteen dollars is for athletic busing and one hundred I'm sorry, one million four hundred eighty-nine thousand eight hundred twenty-one dollars is for traditional busing. I just wanted to show you that breakdown, because it's a big number. We have ten outplaced students at various locations. That affects expenditures in our transportation lines and tuition lines. I provided several graphs detailing the first student statewide and athletic transportation breakout as well as outplaced tuition numbers year-over-year, and I'll go back to that when we talk about the graphs.
Yeah. So this number is alarming.
Mm-hmm.
And I know the proposed legislation to change the districts is going to be um a rollout and we're not in the first phase of that rollout. Because this, this budget here compared to the budget we just got is an extra, um, you know, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars more.
Another student, yep.
A hundred and seventy thousand, a hundred and seventy-three thousand eight hundred and nine dollars more.
And it can change like that during the year, that's.
Yeah, it can.
And that's just from last meeting to this meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Right. And it could change next week.
I'll just hold, if you could just hold your minutes, because if I lose my train of thought, it's gonna be a sieve. And the tuition for special for um education services from last meeting to this meeting went up a hundred and seven thousand.
Yep, so that's that particular student.
So one student is a hundred and seven thousand. And that's, we can't see that coming? We can't predict?
I think that's very well, it's illustrated very well when we get to the charts at the end to, to show that difference of that's a huge impact for our, it's.
Make sure you have the mic on.
Yeah.
So this page alone has an extra three hundred and nine thousand six hundred and thirty-two dollars from last meeting to this meeting. And yet you still found ways to try and save.
Try and.
Okay.
We wanna look at supplies. Two hundred thousand is a total proposed cut from general supplies and materials line from the original requested budget with all asset a ten percent increase what I originally showed you before we got down to the three point three. Some curricular needs that aligned with this UCOA are no longer being implemented and additional proposed cuts were made to ensure the UCOA aligned with year-to-year expenditures. The curricular um decision was made by the building administrators um in that particular area. Just let me know if you have any questions. If not, I'll move on to equipment and professional work fees.
So I saw that that went down about six thousand, but every bit counts. Where are we going to next?
Equipment and professional work fees. Neither of these sections had additional proposed cuts from our prior budget workshop.
Yeah.
I was asked to create several graphs at our last meeting, and although many are self-explanatory, I did wanna touch on a few of them. You wanna take a look at the outplace student graph year-over-year? Yep, it should just roll up if he keeps going.
Oh, those are upside down.
No, he's got. Uh, the outplaced students.
Non-CTE is what it leads on the first. That's what I'm looking at right here on the.
Oh, sorry.
I have a.
Transportation tuition.
No, no, no.
You got it?
Place, yep, I'm on that first.
Yeah, it's the third graph down, yeah.
So we currently have ten outplace students budget for next year, making our FY twenty-six projection for outplaced tuitions alone, excluding CTE and charter schools, six hundred thirty-seven thousand seven hundred twenty-five dollars. As you can see in the chart, that is substantially higher than FY twenty-two, twenty-three, which was one hundred eighty-nine thousand nine hundred eighteen dollars. I just wanted to show for reference that jump.
Can you, can you explain to me outplaced students? I mean, I know it's obvious, but um are these students that are not um attending our school and what brings them to be outplaced? I'm just curious why such a jump? What drives it?
I, I think the easiest way to probably explain it, because I had asked these questions in the past, is that these are um students with differentiating needs um and we do not have the ability to meet their needs in district. We have a number of students, um specialized students in district that were able to accommodate where we see the additional services. But there are some, and this, this, and as Stephanie said, there are, it can cost up to a hundred thousand dollars to place a student. Some of these things change if someone moves into our district. Um, yes, once, once we have a student in our district, if we know they're gonna be with us, it's easy to project those costs, but um you, as you can see from where two twenty, twenty-two to twenty-three, there's significant jumps in the amount and it's based on the needs of, I think it's very safe to say that any child um that lives in Situate, we wanna do everything we possibly can as those, their family, as does everyone else, to have them be, remain in district. And it's only in circumstances where we don't have the ability to meet due to um whether it be medical needs or we just aren't equipped, we have an obligation and responsibility to pay for whatever that tuition is. Am I surmising that in like, dumb it down as best I could, Lori?
Those are your um special needs kids. You may also um have homeless kids and families. Um, they could be um homeless and displaced to East Providence. We are legally required to transport those kids back to Situate. So you have those kids, you have kids that are placed by DCYF in um all sorts of um placements. We are required um to pay for those placements if those are Situate um kids. We have um kids that are uh charter, it looks like we don't have any at this point, but um so there are a number of reasons why students might be considered tuitioned or outplaced. Um, not all of them due to decisions that are um under the control of uh the Situate School Department. But we are financially responsible.
Is it safe to say that if there's any child, and you're good, that I didn't bring the point about the charters, but we don't, do we have any kids in charters, right? It says.
We have two, just not in that chart. I separated them.
But at, the biggest, the, one of the biggest cost drivers is obviously our special children with special needs. Is it safe to say that if that, any child's needs can be met in district, we're keeping them in district?
Without a doubt.
Okay, that's, I, so it's, it's non-negotiable, right? Like these numbers are.
The other charts I just wanted to mention, um I broke out the three highest material expenditure sections by object code in our operational budget so that you can see the breakout of what is driving our operational budgetary increases. You will see these breakouts in the salary benefit and purchase services grants, graphs. Back to grants.
A- as you can see, um, the expenditures contractual obligations make up the majority um of that.
So those were sort of the highlights. So those were sort of the highlights I wanted to mention, but I want to bring it back to you all. If you want to revisit anything, or any proposals that were made, or any adjustments with your direction, I can write them down and make those changes. Before we move to capital.
So to be clear, as Colleen Penegas pointed out, we're getting about a close to a million dollars from the state this year, right?
Well, we think we are, about $700,000.
So far.
Increase, increase.
Increase. And yet I see we have a 300-plus thousand dollar increase in salaries, which could also go higher. We have $140,000 increase in healthcare premiums, which we discussed may not be high enough. Transportation went up $490,000. Tuition to educational services went up 190. Certified retirement went up 230. So the hundred of the one million 700 total increase this year over last year, which is about a six and a half percent increase. Like 140 just right there, I just rattled off, not 140, 1,400 I just rattled off, is taken up by those few items.
So 1.4 million. 1.4 million, 700,000 of that, we are very hopeful if the state number holds. So about half of that, the other half, we have to either try to absorb within this budget, or go to the town and ask for.
Can I ask a clarifying question, just to go along, so just so we're all clear? Our revenue section obviously is very small. We don't have, we don't have multiple streams, right? We have a lot of pages of what we spend. So in the, this, like right here, so it's tuitions, it's local appropriations, tuitions, Medicaid, which is separate and distinct, and which is stated, but separate to Medicaid. And then your state aid base, that number there that we're talking about, this is where we're talking about, so that's the increase of the 700,000. Also in that, are there any, in that base, is that entire line simply per pupil, or are there other things like Title IX grants, like other things that are pulled in?
It's just high-cost special ed, but it's all in there.
Okay, alright.
One year they gave us that transitional aid, then took it away, so they kind of.
They added in that pool of money, but.
This year they added MLO money in there. It's not a separate fund anymore.
But just to get the view, I kind of made all this.
I just can understand why members of the community, not the people in this room, would say to us, usually you come to us saying we have 300,000 less in the state, or 200,000 less, and we need to fill the hole. And now we're coming with 700 more, and then all, everything put together, 1.7 billion dollars, and they're probably going to say, well, what are you coming to us for? And we have to prove to them, show them, maybe even a graph that shows these big-ticket items that we do not have control over, that's driving this, and why we still need to come and ask for more, even though we're given so much this year. Maybe we need Andy back for that messaging. For those people who are not here, or maybe not listening. Maybe they'll go back and, which is why we're having this recorded. So people can truly understand. I'm, I'm, I'm just talking out loud, stating the obvious, but pretty soon we have to go to the town budget committee and advocate, and not everybody here has children in the school system. So it's, it's, it's going to be a, a tricky sell. I just want to make sure that we tell that story well. If we had to, where is there a place to even save more if we had to? Is this, because this has been cut back so many times, and I appreciate that, and every, you're cutting back and you're still, I'm still seeing more increases because of things out of our control, whether it's an extra student or transportation.
I would say not in the operations budget, so I would look at maybe the personnel line and see what you, the committee would like to do with that.
So I, I think that maybe we can segue into, into that piece with, and I do want to just back on, because even I know what you're talking about, Erica, is trying to bring our ass down or justify our ass, right? But I'm still concerned about the
Healthcare.
The healthcare, like I, I don't know, and not that you didn't do what you were tasked to do, but it's, it's this, you can't pull from one side and not. So I think, obviously, our, our biggest expenditure is FTEs. And I know this budget includes, we have added, there's an HR position that's been added in, that's on top.
That position has been in the budget since you approved it three years ago.
Okay.
We've never taken it out, it's always kind of sat there. It is vacant and empty.
But that's part of your savings that you're, I know, I, it's, yeah, that's why you're getting your 3%.
Why I make that big number.
I know, yeah, okay, so, alright, so, but.
So this currently has the math coach, a new K teacher, and no changes anywhere else, the current proposal you're looking at.
Math note. So the piece is, and I know this is the million-dollar question, is, you know, where are we with our projected enrollments, and where are we? I know it's we cut last year on first grade and second grade at Hope Elementary, based on the numbers, those I'm, oh, kindergarten, I'm sorry, I, I knew what I was thinking, but I said it the wrong way. Yes, kindergarten in first grade, those children are obviously moving up to, are we seeing any? The, I, I, and I'm just being upfront and honest, and I, I know there's people here that I want to throw stuff at me when I see it, when I say it, but if we cut them, if they were cut there at kindergarten in first grade, if the, the same class size is moving up, how do we then justify a personnel line for, without those numbers? Again, what happened at Clayville within the last 10 years was, it just was every year, based on it. And I don't want anybody to be displaced, but it's, and our jobs need to be based on enrollment. Whether it be, you know, a section of an English class at the high school, the middle school team that we had to get rid of, if we don't have the students to do it, how do we justify, and if we had an abundance of money, I'd have 10 kids in every class in every school, but if we have to justify 10 kids or 11 kids in two classrooms at one school, what are we doing with the rest of the town? What, how do we? So it, I just, I feel we need some, that's the biggest place where our numbers can shift. And it can't just be because, oh, that's the way it's always been. The budget and the actual number should be based on what the need is. Does that ring true for, I mean, I'm just, I'm putting it out there, like, we're saying, oh, we're going to save $300,000 in healthcare that we might not lose, but we're going to fund, we could, you're saying what we have in the budget is to fund it to, and I'm just using numbers, I don't know if this is true, to 11 kid classrooms.
What are the, let's start with that second grade.
And, or whatever it is, I don't care if it's the, the music program, I don't want anyone to take anybody's job, but if there's no, if they're not students to fill a classroom or a section or this, we can't, we can't afford to keep them. Does that make sense? I mean, I, I'm just, I'm putting it out there, where it's up in front now, like, I don't want anyone to say, oh, we didn't know this was coming, we didn't know. If, you know, those are the tough decisions, I think.
I, I, in a minute, I, I want to find out, what are the numbers?
The second grade right now. I can give you the kindergarten numbers. We just, we just opened kindergarten online registration, the the families that, and the names that we currently have give us a total of 80 incoming K students. We know that number won't hold, it never does.
Because it's not been vetted yet?
Right, they, they need to register. It'll be close, but it generally drops. We have 88 total K seats in the current kindergarten-established classrooms without adding that K teacher that we put in as a safety net.
So that, that's the other piece, so that K teacher, we're adding a K teacher as a safety net because.
Okay, yeah. Kindergarten numbers were 33.
Yep.
And so, yeah, so I said, let me budget for one, in case I absolutely have to have two cave rooms out at Hope, I've got to have a teacher in that budget, so.
Yep.
Um, we've put it there, district-wide, you have eight empty seats if everybody shows. That's what I have for kindergarten.
Okay, hold on. So as of now, unvetted numbers, which historically have not held, we have eight empty seats district-wide, which would put how many students in each classroom, 23? Contract-wise?
You would be, you would be under. I, I don't know, I got to do the math.
I mean, just rough math in my head, though, if, if you're saying 80 registered, we presently, as of today, and like, we have, we have four kindergarten classes, so that's, I, I, I know the numbers don't move exactly.
Yeah.
It's 20, 20, 20, 20, 20.
Yeah.
20, 20, 20.
We have four classes.
Yeah, we have four, 20, yeah. You've got currently 21 students in grade one at Hope, so they would be going to grade two. So you, if you want to keep that second grade teacher, you'd have a class of 10 and a class of 11.
That, that's the second grade? Yeah, I, I don't know how. Moving up to that, how do we justify that? How do we justify we're going to have two teachers in second grade at Hope, and we're going to have one at the other schools that have the same enrollment? And we also, we had to make the difficult decision to have one teacher for K in one, but now they're going to go to two, and we're going to keep two. We're going to move them back to two, that, that's counterintuitive, like, as far as what, and again, if I could have every elementary school have 11 kids in it, that'd be dynamic, but that's not, that's not sustainable.
I think it's about a 100, average $100,000 all-in benefit salary per teacher, correct?
That's the figure we use budget-wise, yes.
Yes, but after we have a conversation, so hold him, his pencils if you need to hold him, but after we have a conversation. Um, so I hear you, Colleen. Especially with the taxpayers, going to the town, going to FTM. This is not an easy conversation. So with the kindergarten, we currently have four classes, and if we add it in the district, right, so if we add a teacher next year, we'll have five, correct?
Yes. Sorry, I'm doing something else.
It's okay. No, no, no worries. Using my phone for calculating.
Old school, I use a pencil. I'm trying to anticipate the next question, I'm going to get, I'll try and get it ready.
So from a perspective of FTEs, you have per law, contract, and everything in between, any teacher, we've already done our due diligence in serving, that those letters have already gone out, like, they go in every other district, right? Like.
Yes, the non-renewal letters for budget have already gone out, it's on your agenda for April 1, so yes.
And those are just, anybody with remote possibility, that may, we may have a system, we take everybody, we make sure we have at least one teacher from every grade level, every content area, every specialist. Beautiful, I know it, I, but it's, it's awful. It is, it is, because everybody, people get them for 10, 12, 14 years, I like, um, but the reality is, and I, again, when we open it up to the public, I know a lot of the pushback and the feedback came back from last year's budget, well, we didn't know this could happen, we didn't know this could happen. I think it needs to be part of this meeting, that this can happen. If there are not students to fill classrooms, there are not going to be teachers, whether it be at an elementary, middle school, or high school. So I, I just want to be clear about that, and I think we need to be very transparent about that.
I have a, a question. Just so I have the, all the information, or as much information as I can think I need. So we have eight empty seats district-wide, where are they?
Well, they're not anywhere, just yet, but Clayville has 11 students that we know about, Hope has 33, and North Situate has 36, so. North Situate has, did I say that right? North Situate has 36, sorry, Hope has 33, and Clayville has 11. So I have eight seats at North Situate, and I have 11 seats at Clayville. But you need, you'd need to, if you don't add that K teacher, if you don't keep that K teacher in the budget as I budgeted for, then I have to move 11 of those Hope kids to either North Situate or Clayville.
I can't be the other way around, because Clayville only has 11.
Hold on, Bobby, please. I will hear you, I will hear you, but let us do the process first, I will hear you. And I know that you had mentioned a program that we have, it's a program we already have, that you can see where the students are, because we haven't vetted the students yet, right? So we're not even sure where these students live, or do we?
No, because they need to register, and then their addresses will go into the system. And Jay is working with the bus company, and their software maps the kids all out, and so we'll be able to clearly see based on where students and families live, where the, where it makes sense for them to attend. That's why when families are registering this year, they are not being told what school their elementary child is, is assigned to. Because I know you wanted to talk about maybe blurring those lines and moving those lines.
So long as those are on the peripheral, preferably. So when do you generally know all that information to make those decisions? Not until the summer, right?
Well. Yeah, yes.
So we have to make a financial decision now on something that may, we may not have all the information until the summer.
That's pretty much how the budget works, yeah.
And that's, that's not new, yeah.
Do we have a, a soft deadline for kindergarten registration?
No deadline. There will be families that register the day before, the day of, that morning, they'll walk in. Oh, I had to fill out a form, I had no idea.
Shouldn't we have a soft one, though, just to get a?
I'd be happy to do it, but it won't matter. I, I will do it if that's the committee's will, but it, it won't.
We have to.
It won't matter.
I know we have to accept them anyways, but I'm just saying.
Just want to point out that we are starting contract negotiations with the teachers, so we don't even really know how the regular salary line bottom line's going to come out. I'm stating the obvious. And for the community to understand what I'm thinking, I'm just thinking out loud. Health premiums do concern me greatly. That certified retirement number. Also quite possible change as a result of contract negotiations. It already went up sixty thousand between last meeting and this meeting. Sorry, I asked Stephanie. You already answered my question, but I forget what it was. Under the diagnostics, why did that go up fifty thousand? Between last meeting and this meeting? Was it a Yucola movement? No. Take your time.
Sorry. We were level funding it after doing another comb through, because we don't anticipate that it will be lower. Based on the need.
So you had lowered it, but now you looked at it and said, we're playing with.
Well, that happened with the second budget workshop. We go through with a finer tune.
So now it's level funded.
But we level funded it, because in other areas, we know we're gonna probably go over.
I can notes, so I don't have to ask you again.
Sorry, I won't have any more minutes.
You can have minutes. I'll just make notes, so I don't ask you the same question twice. I know you went through the transportation, which is also a big driver. And I know we've got charts on it. Is some of that, some of, some of that is due to sports, right? Is it because we added sports?
So the breakdown was athletic transport, I'm sorry. Four hundred three thousand nine hundred fifty-one dollars of that line is statewide. So that's that transportation we were talking about.
When you say statewide, that's just us busing our students.
That that is the state system that we are required to use. In order to get the excess cost transportation reimbursement that we get from the state, which certainly doesn't cover. All the transportation, but anytime a student is homeless and is out of district and has to come back, is D C Y F. Placed somewhere and needs to be transported um is um. Uh, placed um outside of the district um for any reason. Other than um something that is under our control. We have have to utilize statewide transportation.
Private school.
A private school.
All these numbers on this graph right here, just to be clear, this is strictly to people that were busing outside of our district, obviously. This is not.
So the transportation for. I I'll call it in district, but our regular first student transportation is the one million four hundred eighty-nine thousand eight hundred twenty-one. Athletic is one hundred seven thousand seven hundred eighteen.
So what's driving this numbers mostly the outplaced? That's not the right word.
Higher than it was before, yes.
And that is some of the conversation in those um transportation meetings that we've um gone to, Erica. Around the zones. And who's responsible for what areas? Because um the costs have skyrocketed for all districts.
Legislation, actually. No, but the co- we have a signed contract with a transportation provider, even inter- like for just like, it goes up, we pay what.
Our regular in-house busing, yes, we have a signed contract.
But that includes, we had to bite a bullet when all the costs, right? Like, it's not. It is what it is. I I. Which is why we're trying to change our zone for, because you know, he here, we have to pay to bus homeless. We don't get state reimbursement for busing homeless. But our taxpayers have to pay to bus students to private schools. That's what's. That's what's being discussed at great lengths now. But will not change prior to our budget, obviously. Yeah, no, I get it. I it's not, it doesn't make sense when you say it out loud, but it's what is actual. But working on legislation on that one. Are there any more questions before we go on to capital from the school committee? Because then I'd like to open it up to the community. Um, so. Now comments from the community, just on um this main budget, not the capital one yet. And if I could, I'm gonna do my little spiel. I just want to say, the purpose of public comment period is. For this committee to receive input from its community. Public comment is an important function and it is critical for us to listen to the community. And to consider what we hear when making our decisions. In general, it is not a time to receive direct responses from the school committee, however. We may provide brief factual clarification if necessary. Otherwise, the public comment section is for you to voice your concerns without engagement and debate. With school committee members, it is important for you to know that you may not be getting the answers to your questions or concerns during public comment period. But that does not mean you will be not given answers. There are other opportunities for you to get your answers. For example, you may call or email any school committee member. You can reach out to your school parent pact representative. This re- um, this process is designed to allow consistency and fairness and to allow everyone a chance to be heard. Without unduly disrupting the meeting flow and allowing the school committee to complete its business in a timely fashion. As a result, in order to allow everyone an opportunity to speak and an opportunity for us for us to hear your comments. I'll allow each person to come to the mic once during public comment. If you find that you have additional comments after your turn is over, then please address them at a later time by reaching out to a school committee member. Or the superintendent. Having said that, we appreciate you coming to this meeting and we thank you in advance um for expressing your thoughts with us. The first I'll need is your name and address.
Yes, my name is Lynn Rose and um my address is three fifty-six Curry Hill Road in Contry. Um, I just had a question um about the budget as far as. We are under understanding that we're losing a part-time art teacher and a part-time. A librarian. Is that counting as one of the costs? Did you already at like cut that from the budget? Or is that still in the budget now?
That's the itinerants, correct? Yep, that's.
That's out already. Okay, great. And um another question was of the people, the. Students that were displaced last year from Hope, they have no chance of coming back. Is that? The case, or if they want to come back, is that's an option? You know, like in Hope last year, there we got new students coming in into the first grade, but then we put them somewhere else because we couldn't fit them in that one classroom. So is that an option? That's a question.
The same um. Uh, process for the students at Hope as for the students at Clayville and North Situate. A family wants their child to go to another school, they write um a letter to the superintendent if there's room in that classroom. If it's, if Hope is their home school, then the parent would not have to provide transportation, obviously. But if it's outside of their normally assigned school, then the parent, if there's room. I always grant the request and the parent has to provide the transportation. I have not received any as a, I don't, you haven't. Oh, Patty says we have one. So it didn't come to me, it went to her, but so we have one.
Thank you.
Bobby Coletta, nine Brett Drive. Um, so I've heard that we are at two, two, two and a half percent, right, uh, over last year. Um, with an allowance to the town council of four percent. Am I accurate? I'm learning here too, right? A total of four percent, right? For both, okay, so um. I'll state um kind of factually and then questions that I have. So last year, when we went, when this whole situation happened at Hope and we were concerned with the. Transparency and awareness and all that stuff, I think we're doing a great job of addressing that here today, so thank you for that. Um, I also think we're doing a more active uh job of being engaged, so it is on us, as I said to you guys last year. So um, but last year when we brought this to the town council, they had said, well, that's the commi- the committee brought the budget to us. And we subsequently approved everything the committee brought to us, is what they had said to us. So then all of us parents are like, well, why isn't the town council doing anything? What, you know, we were all in a very aggravated state. So then the question becomes is. If we are allowed to present up to four percent, or we're allowed to present what we have here. Um, which I understand the these X factors and the healthcare and other things, but. I I am having a hard time digesting why we would bring anything less than the minimum to our town council. And let them tell, I I don't know why we we should be asking for everything of the town council. I I I personally feel like, but go ahead.
I can explain that. Um, first of all, the town council did not approve everything we asked us. They told us to go back and cut more. I wish George Cosmowitz was here, but um and please back up what I'm telling you. Oof, I hate even saying this in case I'm wrong, but it's my understanding and I understand why you think. That each department in the town can go to the town council and ask for four percent, because. Four percent from each department to the town equals four percent. It doesn't work that way. It's much more complicated than that. For example, and again. I might be eighty percent accurate in the way I'm explaining this. Fire department, for example. Got a new fire truck bonded and now they actually may need, and now the town needs to start paying off on that bond. Um, again, broad stroke explanation, because that's the level I understand it. They may need actually more than four percent. Because of paying off that bond. So each department can't actually come with a four percent. Completely understand why you're asking that question.
We're all in this together as as community members and our tax dollars, so.
So it doesn't, it doesn't work that way cleanly. In addition, um. The, on the town side. They are two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars already starting off in the hole. Because of a um of an era of over um taxing province water supply. I think I have most of that accurate. So the town is already starting off in a negative. Now.
Which we have reserve funds for and other things, right? But yes.
So can I talk to that for a second? I'll just, let me just finish what's up. That and then and then you can come help me. Um, that doesn't mean that, well, that's the town's problem. The school had nothing to do with it. Because in reality, as had they caught that mistake, they would have come back to us. And every other department said, cut even more, because we actually don't even have that extra two hundred something thousand. So we are already starting off, not at a four percent, because we have to fill that hole. To speak to that one speak, one piece specifically, and this is my understanding. So. For this year, we, this past, this current fiscal year, not even projecting out, they closed the hole with reserve funds. That cannot be, that had to be done, because there wasn't the money to fill it. It was a miscalculation. We were out, I believe it was over two eighteen, like. However, over two hundred thousand dollars. But we certainly cannot expect the town to go back to, it's an error in the opera, it's on the um. Revenue side, it's a recurring revenue, like we need that money back in there. So they say they're gonna take it from reserves. That was the one time. So whatever that number comes out to at the four percent levy for the entire town. Take two hundred thousand dollars off the top of it to start this year and then to move forward. So no, it can't come out of.
Okay, I understand. I'm just saying, we should not, we as a, I I would hope that you as a committee would be asking for everything from our town council that we possibly can. And then asking them if we have to go back and rewrite it, we we rewrite it, right? That that's my ask of all of you, is that we're asking for the most. Um, as relates to the F T E positions, is everyone aware of the test scores in the kindergarten? Uh, the kindergarten test scores from each of the M L G schools? Are you guys all aware of what the test scores look like?
I can't um cite them off the top of my head.
You guys have all been given that information on the test scores from Hope, Clayville, and North Situate?
We have not had our meeting at Hope, which is where we would normally get that presentation, so we've not been given that presentation.
Okay, yeah, it was interesting, because I was looking back at the meeting minutes from the last meeting. All of the performance indicators and all of the test score readouts started at level grade three. Um, in the publication that you guys sent out, so nothing showed K one, two. There's no what Rycast. Okay, so that's that's why then. Okay, thank you for that. So there's no Rycast, but there was no indication on what the score performance looked like. So for me, as a kindergarten mom, I didn't know how we were performing year over year. Uh, so I subsequently asked a superintendent for that information um and. You you know, um, she can read out to you what those scores are. Um, Hope Elementary. Has uh declined in both English and in math uh on on um. On the test scores. So that's my ask, that we'd be asking for the full. You know, the full support of of the committee and of the council to fund that 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 kindergarten classroom. Um, so, you know, I think test scores, yes, we need to have bodies to to. Justify the teachers in those roles. I completely understand that from a business sense, but there's also a real sense of when we have only thirty percent of our. Uh, student body meeting the requirement, there's there's a bigger issue there, right? So um, that's one thing that I would just say it's foundational, right? These kids are learning how to read. How to, and that is a foundation for social studies and every other thing thereafter, right? I think you guys, we all, we all can appreciate that. Um, so I I want to make sure that everyone's aware of the testing scores and in all the districts. I want to um ask that. Um, I should look back at my notes here.
Look at them.
Yeah, the 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 folks who were bused out of Hope into other schools, right? So we're gonna have um Hope Elementary is going from, I think we had like twenty-two registration in kindergarten last year to what was thirty? Thirty-three at the high side, which is which is a big number, right? So I would ask that there's consideration that we're not just taking Hope kids and moving them to other di- to other schools, right? Like, let's look at the totality of the thing, and I hope is not the first grabbed out of the uh of the teacher F T E pool. Um, you know, what does that look like? We have first graders that were displaced. Um, first kindergarten and first grade that were displaced, and if they come back into the district, does that actually help us? Support this this second grade classroom, so on and so forth, right? It's like this, um, if you keep moving things, you know, i- i- there's there's no stability there. So to your point about, well, we're gonna have eleven kids in second grade, but there's no stability, there's no stability in it for for the teachers, for the for the parents to understand. The dynamic. Um, I just, uh, you know, so that's one thing I would ask, is that. Students who are bused out uh of Hope in the kindergarten or first grade classroom, they have the opportunity to come back, which you said that they you, they would have the opportunity to come back. So that would be another consideration um that that I would ask. And then um. Yes, I don't, I only have one shot at asking all of my questions and I want to make sure that I do just that. Um, oh, are there any floater positions in the district that are for like specialized programs? Or that are specific, that are not, when I say, when I think of a full-time teacher, I mean like a a first grade teacher, second grade teacher, like actually. Like a classroom, you know, is there is there any floater positions that we have?
I don't really know what you mean by a floater position.
Like somebody that's caring for a a multitude of different things. Like, is there anyone that.
Within one building?
Within the district.
I guess I have to say no, because I can't, like, I can't, we don't have anybody like extra, like, just.
No, I'm not talking about subs. I'm talking just about like, if if there are.
Like if we had a math specialist that did part-time Clayville, part-time Hope.
Yeah, like a ma- math specialist, um, I don't know, uh, special edu- I I mean, I don't know, that's a special education, but. I would just ask us to look at folks that maybe are not as. Direct to the student. I I I guess that's the only way I can explain it, right? Um, somebody who is not, right, because a a a. A first grade teacher is gonna be with those kids eight eight hours a day, right? Like, and they're 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 educating all that stuff. And then you got, uh, in my mind, I think that there's, I I would imagine that there's. I would call him a floater, right? But that's the only way I can explain it, is somebody who is not an educator, like not a one-for-one educator to a classroom. And where are those people? Do we know that?
Just to, to like, as I'm thinking of it, so yes, it's very different at an elementary level, because you're obviously like, just like you're saying, it's. Twenty kids or twenty, whatever kids with one person. So for example, we cut a math teacher last year at the high school because of of enrollment. So there um. But they're having four sections of students, so it's broken out differently. Do you know what I mean? Like, it's, they may not be that one person that's with the same kids. It's hard to compare apples to apples. I know, like, at the elementary level, at one point, we used to.
we used to have like our, some of our attendants would go from school to school to piece together, but as far as educators themselves, they all have full-time schedules though, and every.
I know, but is there anybody, is there anybody that's not direct, like, so other than like the high school, which I understand, like, you know, they're grouping like math and. Maybe an overlay is a position I would, I would call it, like, okay, a math specialist or an English specialist. What other overlay positions do we have?
We don't.
We have no other overlay positions.
And you have teachers here. So if I'm missing.
Maybe those, I, I don't know. I don't know what I don't know. I don't know. Okay, all right. Okay, maybe. I don't know. I'm just looking, is there an overlay position that we could be looking at that is better suited for like that one-to-one classroom? So that was, that's my other question. Again, I, I don't know. I'm not an educator. Um, I give all the kudos to all of you guys and all that you do. I think the other ones I kind of captured some of the stuff is around the capital, the capital projects and stuff like that. And you answered the question about transportation, that's a statewide contract, but our district contract is what, three years, five years? Is that statewide contract?
We only do three-year contracts and I believe we're in year.
Two.
Two, yeah.
Okay. I was just curious, like, you know, obviously that's a huge line item. Like, is there an opportunity to recontract? I mean, recontract that out to somebody or go get a competitive bids? I mean, I'm sure with even the capital projects.
All of that is done before vetting. And when we brought this last contract, I, and I think you're right, it's a second year. We were, it was the same time as energy prices increased. We were lucky to get what we got. And as awful as it is, it was because we were already contracted, because we did, there's only so many providers of that service in Rhode Island and we did look around and stay, I think we stayed, we stayed with the same one this, right? But it was, it's, no.
And, and that is why we went with the model of parents opting into transportation because, um, there are a lot of parents that routinely, um, bring their own kids to school. We're never gonna not take a kid home or pick a kid up if they, if they need, um, transportation because of whatever reason, even if a parent opted out. Um, but we were able to cut one foot bus just by parents saying, I bring my child.
And that was done last year. So those are the things that we've tried to.
Trying everything.
So the, so the transportation cost going up had nothing, the contract, the rate is the rate. So the, the cost of the transportation going up was simply because of these.
Situations where.
They also, they increase the rate year over year. So when you get the three-year contract, it'll show the rate increase year over year. So then I gotta go back in and look at it and see what it's going to be year over year. But to your point, which I like, um, with the contracts, every time a contract comes due, or we know we can, we look at it and say, is there anybody else that is going to give us a better deal? It comes to school committee, they've, you know, so we always look, but that's a good point.
Okay. Um, all right. That helps explain the transportation things for me.
The huge transportation, um, increase was, um, for the, for those situations that we listed, you know, students being outplaced or special letter D C Y F, um, homeless, um, that would be placed somewhere. So this is.
Yeah.
That's what was a big driver of that.
I understand. Okay. All right. So no, thank you. Those were my questions. But like I said, I would like to make sure that everyone's aware of the testing scores that are happening at Hope. I would like sure, to make sure that we are not just discriminating the Hope families and bussing them around because they're, I don't, I don't know why, we seem to be the target. But, and I would like that we have, I, we have the commitment of the committee, committee to ask the full boat to our town council that let them tell us no.
Well, to be clear, the town council can, um, tell us how much money they'll give us, but they cannot tell us how to spend it.
Right. But I'm saying, I would like us to ask the, for the, for the full ask, right? And let them tell us, we cannot give you that because that's not what happened last year.
So to, what didn't happen last year?
Well, last year they said that the committee, that the committee, we, they gave the committee exactly what they asked for.
That is not true.
You, you approved a misinformation and then they also told you to come back and ask for that. Position. So I don't know, we, I mean, we can't tell you what we can't tell you, but it's not factual that, it's not factual that we were given exactly what we asked for. And the other piece to this is that I understand as a parent, um, that I'd be saying, why not ask for the full thing? The reality is, is that we are the biggest chunk of the town budget.
And the most important chunk of the.
Well, to you it is, but not to everybody. So the reality is we have, we, once they give us the money, this committee gets to spend it any way we can. We have access to zero without being, working in partnership with not only the town council, but the budget committee. They have to look at an entire town and see what their needs are. Because we encompass so much of that, going for a four percent ask would almost blow everyone else out of the water. It would be unheard of.
It would leave nothing left to the rest of the town.
We're talking for the elderly, we're talking for the, like, I could go on and on. So yes, as a school committee, we are doing.
Yeah, we're only asking for two point five.
That's a lot.
Well, also.
Because we just got seven hundred from the, from the state. We got another, you know, when you're done calling out.
Just, I, I, I validate your point. Like, yes, we are the advocates for education in the, like, that's all we see, even us as, we're all taxpayers, but our job right here is to see this. To go, we, we've done this before, we've been, we are never ever, they're, they're going to laugh at us. They're going to say, you know, you're not going to get this. And the most of the town. So if we don't go in in good faith efforts, that we have done everything we can possibly do to bring it to the most reasonable place. And even then, last year, they took, what was it? Another, like.
It took more away.
So.
Yeah, I mean, maybe it's, maybe it is beginning the comms guy back because our, our test scores are proving that this needs more attention. Like, I mean, truly. So I'm not going to sit here and obviously I'm getting emotional about it because I feel like I'm back in, in the same position as I, we are last year. Um, but I would just say that it's a communication thing too. If you are going to sit here and tell me that you are all for these students, but the first thing that came out was cutting the kindergarten for first time.
It was not the first thing that came up, Bobby. I'm so sorry. That's how you feel.
It is. But so anyways, so I will say that I, I just feel like this is like a stable circus, but we, we really need to, if, if our scores are the way they are, I mean, we are plummeting, we're losing forty percent, forty kids are leaving left Situate and we got how many back seventeen this year? I mean.
I don't know what that's, what that means.
Forty, forty, and I'm sorry, forty children are going to another district to get their education because they don't see that Situate. They chose to do CTE programs at other schools, right? That was forty students out last year.
We have, we have more students coming in than going out.
Fifteen.
We have fifteen new applicants and we have fifty-five that are current.
Okay.
So seventy total. And, uh, we have forty all going.
So when we started this process before we had a CTE program, we had.
Everyone leaving, bleed out. Yeah. So that's, that's good. I understood those numbers. So I thought it was the other way. So I'm glad to, I'm glad to hear that, that we are getting more kids in than, than out. That's, that's on the up and up. I would just ask that we look at the kindergarten test scores because now my son is going from first grade, from kindergarten to first grade, where he's going to build foundational reading and they're thirty, they're like thirty percent. I mean, how does he, how does he learn social studies and all the other things from there? That, I mean, truly, I mean, I don't know. So anyways, thank you.
So, um, I think that's a very good point. And, um, I'm always saying these, I want to create a story out of these numbers, right? So when we go to advocate to the town council, I want to make a story out of this. So the test scores is definitely a, a really great story. And, but I also wanted to, um, uh, compliment what Colleen Penegas was saying is if we went to the town council every year and just asked for four, before, no, I, I know, I know. I just want to finish my thought. I understand. And I'm not just talking to you, I'm talking to anyone who, because it's, it's a logical thought that you had, it really is. Um, and just ask for four percent. They would eventually just think that we're just padding everything. We don't need it all. We've created such a healthy trust between us and the town council. It's so unusual. That we have a great working relationship with the town council because it is very common where the school department and the councils just, they do not get along. This town council is supportive of the schools and I believe like Colleen Penegas is saying is because we go and they know we've worked at this. And this is not the first, second, third or fourth, fifth cut. Which is why I said, you know, the, the going for the teachers was not the first thing we went to. There's been so much cutting going on for, for weeks now. But that is another reason why we just can't automatically go and ask for four percent because they're going to see that, oh, it's, it's just padding. And we've been accused of that in the past. The, um, the way we present our budget now, um, now that we've got the Tyler program is so much more transparent. And there's no games here. You can see, if you saw the other department, that's how they present their budget. You're thinking, I don't even know what's going on. This is the most buttoned up, transparent budget than any other department in this town presents. And there's a trust as a result, uh, um, between us and the town council. They know we've tried. So I just wanted to make sure, um, my thoughts were shared with that. But I do also want to thank you again for those, uh, scores. I will go look at that because again, if we're going to go advocate, even though the town council cannot, um, tell us how to spend our money, we can at least advocate the more backing and, um, rationale and reasons. And we often go to data that we can prove, the more likely they will listen and support. I'm going to have Matt come up.
Uh, Matthew Allen, one, five, nine, Hope Burness Road. Um, so I know I'm not going to get answers. I know kindergarten opens enrollment at the end of March, beginning of April. Have we tried opening it earlier to get better numbers before we're asking for more money? Is, or is there a reason why we start at the end of?
Well, we were going to start a week ago, but we had a glitch with the program, but it's open now. So we've always, um, done it at this time of year. We can, it'll, we can open it earlier next year. It won't help us this year, but.
No, I'm, obviously, I just know like, uh, it's the teachers' contracts are coming up and the budget is already set in motion before, like to go to the town, um, and now obviously the numbers can still go through August, but again, you'd have, I think, if you started in January, February, even in like a little bit earlier, you may not get the numbers. I don't know, um, a better going forward. And of course, you know, I'm going to push for that second grade classroom, um, if, it wouldn't be a meeting if I didn't, um, I, I, I understand. Uh, like I said, I've talked to some of you guys and I feel that it's important. I think, um, with Bobby, I haven't looked at the scores, so I can't say I have, but, uh, my son is making strides. Um, I still think he is behind, uh, despite the report card and his teachers from where the other kids are in trying to write. Again, mine has an I E P for those who don't know. And he's autistic and I still feel like, yes, they're saying he's meeting the levels and I don't know where they actually fall, but I feel like some of his classmates obviously are ahead of him. I feel like a smaller classroom would benefit, um, like going forward, trying to get to make sure he's not falling more behind. Um, these teachers are working their butt off to make sure all these kids are pushing forward, but there is only so much time in a day, five days in a week. The first grade teacher told my, told me that I pushed him too hard. I've got workbooks for the summer and all that. And, you know, the teach, the parents are trying to push their kids as much as they can, obviously still trying to give them a social life. Um, that's why it was late. He was signing up for football. But you can't, you can't expect a kid this little kindergarten, first grade, second grade. There's five, six, seven-year-olds. They spend all day in class. He comes home, he goes to after-school speech and all of that. Like, we're pushing. Uh, I'm, I can't just say for all parents, but there, we're pushing and we're pushing and we're pushing and we're still not getting the grades up. I don't know if it's the, the amount of kids or their own learning abilities, but, um, like I said, I'm still going to push for that and I understand the budget, but I just like to reiterate that. And, uh, why is the, uh, the last meeting, um, you guys might not know, but they said that for field trips, the buses have like doubled, if not tripled for field trip costs. And I know they don't, sometimes don't travel that far, like Biomes, Salisbury Farm, first grades go into.
I can hear that too, Matt. And I met with the bus company and they sent me the rates and the rates are not disparaging from the rates we paid last year. So if there's a PTO group or somebody out there that has a bill that shows, um, you know, a drastic increase, if somebody could get me a copy of that, because I did meet with the bus company and ask and brought it up specifically.
All right. I will ask my PTO treasurer, because he is not at this meeting tonight. I, like I said, I just heard Clayville had mentioned it. And the PTO is paying it, not, not the schools for the, for the field trips. But again, that's dipping out of something that we could do for the kids, whether it's new books or other things like our PTO, we just had the dance. They bought a bunch of headphones and fidgets for kids with that needed them for the dance. My son enjoyed the dance. Um, it helped them stay seated at rates. Um, and other kids were using them, not just kids with, with disabilities. So we, they are trying to use the money. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'll get them after people in the, people in the room first, but thank you.
Michaela Driscoll, three Bart Hill Road. Um, in terms of the busing, um, I am the Hope PTA president. I don't have any of the numbers. A lot of the problem with the busing in terms of the bills that we receive, there's a significant lag time. So we're paying the bills from last year at like the start of this year. So we have, there's a significant lag time. On the busing, yeah. There can be, it's, it, it very much varies. I had been the treasurer the last four years. So I, so it, it varies, right? So we're not getting those because they're being submitted. I believe they get submitted to you directly then to the, they're going to the schools and then through us. There's a, a lag time on that.
So, um, I would say, I will, I don't have any problems speaking to the bus company. So I will, I will talk to them about that. This is my recommendation to you. Or to whoever the PTO presidents are out there. As soon as they get the bill, send it directly, um, to the building. And if, um, there's a lag time, let the principal know and she can. They're all she's.
Yeah. No, I, we do. We have a great communication with her and that's not, that's not an issue.
To let me know. And they generally respond when I call.
Just a clarifying question. But the, the issue is they're not even sending, you guys aren't even seeing an invoice or something like that.
There's, but there's, there's been, it depends, oh, I would say more in the last couple of years versus this past year. There's a lag time. And when, so we were paying bills, like talking budgets, our PTA. You know, we were paying bills for the prior year for, and out of our, you know, the monies that we had for.
Should those bills come to our office? They should be going directly to the PTO.
Right.
Yeah, that would make sense, right?
They go to the school.
Maybe that's something we can check on.
So then we submit the, so then I write the check to first student. As from.
Right, because your monies are separate and distinct. Yeah, okay.
I, yeah, we can probably.
Probably send them to the building because that's the one place they know they can get in touch with the PTO.
Correct. They're not going to send it to my.
Presidents may change and.
So, right. But the, the lag time is not from necessarily from central office to you, it's from first student to central office.
If you want to, this could be a great, uh, side conversation.
I want to stay on about that. I just wanted to mention that because it's brought up. My question is, I know you were talking about, you know, and, and certainly we have a lot of concern over that second grade teacher being displaced next year. You said the salary is that hundred thousand dollars is what typically what you kind of budget for a teacher. Is that what we're talking about is just a hun, and I say just, it's not, but that hundred thousand dollars that, that's what we essentially need to find to fund that second grade classroom?
Not necessarily. And Stephanie can probably, um, speak more eloquently about this than I, because it would be a hundred thousand dollars for next year, a hundred thousand dollars for the next year.
I guess to that point, so we're going to cut, but now knowing that we're going to open up that other classroom, kindergarten classroom. So it, we're going to be that every couple of years, we have to refund another. So we're opening, so, you know, first grade essentially this year is still one classroom. Right? Because the kindergarten, the. Right? Because the kindergarten, the current kindergarten is going to go to first grade as one classroom. But then the following year, we're gonna need to open up another first grade again. And then keep cutting, keep, so it's like we're kicking the can essentially, right? By keep, by doing that, because you're going to have to bring back another classroom every few years. But, but knowing that what the enrollment is projected right now, there's the thirty-three students coming to Hope, right? So you're gonna have to have those two Hope class, K classrooms theoretically. Right. Knowing that, so, right? So it's every couple of years. So we have to fund somebody back. And in that timeframe, you're losing amazing educators to cut those classrooms who then have to make the decision where, where are they gonna go, right? She's losing her job and you're not gonna get that educator back.
I just wanna make sure, cause I know I said a lot of things and I talk really fast, but the budget, the two point five, four percent budget that's presented to today has the kindergarten teacher in it and the second grade classroom. Now, so and the math coach. I just wanna make sure I didn't miss that point.
I think that with that, I understood. I don't know if anyone else misses. So right, so the budget as is today at the two point five, so would be two kindergarten classrooms for next year at Hope. Correct?
But I, I think I wanna put, and I'm, I'm not gonna be the bad guy in the room, cause I wanna be clear about this. While these monies are in the budget, if there are not students to, to have, if there were thirty-three students, absolutely, there's going to be. Right, like that's, but we don't know that. So I don't want any, I, I'm just trying to be as open as possible.
I understand that.
And where, but, and so what we didn't get back to as a committee to discuss is, so we're saying these positions, this is what Stephanie came to us. We have a three hundred thousand dollar deficit in our healthcare fund that could potentially collapse our budget. So it's because of those things that based on enrollment, there's gonna be no, I, I, I guess, tell me if I'm wrong, we cannot guarantee today that they are going to be, even if this ba, budget as actual right here, right now passes, that we're going to have two kindergartens and two second grades. And, and just specifically speaking to Hope, and that would go for any school if there weren't the students to support those, those classrooms.
Now, the students that were displaced last year, those K and first grade students at Hope who were displaced to other schools. I understand you said one has reached out that would like to come back to Hope. And to, in speaking of numbers and enrollment, is it, you know, and not everyone comes and sees these meetings, right? I mean, the few, they not, don't know how that they can do that, right? They just got the letter, hey, sorry, your kid's now going to North Situate, you know, and that, that's it. Can we reach out to those families as the district to reach out to them to say, your child was displaced last year? There is now possibility of an option for you to come back to Hope, which would increase the numbers to support those classrooms. Is that something that the district can do for those families to let them know that they have this option?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but when those, um, children were sent to different schools, they were made aware, aware of that at the time that they were.
Right, but that was last August or September, right? I, I mean, I think.
They're, they're aware, but you know, they know, they know.
But I think we're assuming that they know?
No.
So I, I think, I just, and it might not be an answer we have tonight, but I, and I'm, cause I'm kinda hearing two different sides. How many students do we know, at one point they were saying there were all these kids registered to Hope and they just happened to go somewhere else. I, that was a rumor or a myth of last year sometime. And I don't know, do you remember this Lori? Like they had all these people that were registered. How many students were actually, that were truly registered? Cause what's on a foster at some point?
Year or this year?
This, this present year. Of those children that were in either kindergarten or first grade, how many of those students were, um, truly registered that were coming, that we moved to another district? Another school, sorry, yes.
Yeah, five, five kids total.
Okay.
Right. And that, that's if, that's if no one else comes, come, moves to district. So thinking, you know, again, notifying those families, I understand you say that they are aware. I, I would tend to disagree with you on that, that I think that they're, to be able to give them again, the option. Maybe it's not just, okay, they're not, they are aware and they're happy. North Situate and Clayville are great schools and they may be happy there, right? And that's fine. But just the option, because I do know, and I'm sure it's probably the one that you've already received, is not happy and wishes that their child was at Hope. Um, and then I think again, I've brought this up before to the committee. And we're talking about the high transportation costs, but you know, there's multiple buses that go down my street, bringing children to different schools.
And so we are looking at all of that also.
You know, so and again, because.
Company, you know, honestly, she said to me, Lori, I have buses passing each other.
Yes.
I said, so why are we doing that? So.
The one that passes is because that child is in first grade and moved the day before school started last year and had to go to North Situate.
They are looking at all of those routes and making them more efficient for kids, for families and for the buses.
But I think the more efficient thing would be to allow that student to come to Hope.
It's now costing us a hundred thousand dollars, you say.
I get it. I know.
Yeah, no, that's, that's, it's the, to open up for, and I'm not saying it's one student, but it's, it's, yes, I understand, but I don't know that we can just say, oh, we can open another classroom because we're one student over. Whatever the cost is, and we, should we be as efficient as possible in transportation? Absolutely. But it's certainly not costing us what it would cost to expand for a whole class for one kid, if it was that child.
But I guess just to, to be clear, at this point, as projected, the, it would be two kindergarten classrooms at Hope. You'd have one first grade because the current kindergarten would still remain for that one classroom for the first grade that we have. And then the current first grade would be split up into the two because you're still budgeting for two second grade classrooms.
Well, I think that's what, that's part of the discussion tonight is part of, um, that we still have three hundred thousand dollars to kinda, and again, it's what the will of the committee is and what the, like, do we go with this budget? Again, if it was in there and it was, if it, it passed and there was warranted, absolutely. Why wouldn't we wanna do that? But if, I think we have to look at what our projected numbers are. If it's projected to be like, would be what, ten and eleven? Is that what we said? I don't know that that's feasible when we have a three hundred.
Like, no, so.
No, I'm sure you're talking.
Second grade specifically, because you currently have two second grades currently at Hope. But there's only one first grade currently.
Send that whole first grade classroom.
Correct.
So you'd have ten and eleven.
Right. Knowing that one, I, you know, there's others who may want to come back to Hope if that's the possibility, which would increase.
No, did I move?
Oh, three, three, but it would be, it would be.
And two first.
First grade, two first graders.
I did, I know it's just one kid, but just to add to the radar, we just had a new family register that has an incoming second grader next year.
So that would get you to twenty-five students right there to keep that second.
They, they're staying in their district right now, even though they're living in Situate, but they'll be with us by the start of next year.
So there's a, you know, incoming K and two that those are, I think it's just knowing that last year, I think a lot of us parents, and I, I, I can't speak everyone, so I'll certainly speak for myself, felt like we had the, these conversations and then at the eleventh hour, everything was pulled out from under the rug of how everything kind of came out last year. And I think that's why many of us are here just to see and have this open dialogue and communication that we're aware that this is what you're budgeting for. And this is what projected and to have that communication, if things are going to change, to be aware of what is going on and that this, that is going to be a change. I know even, you know, just for this meeting today, I know a lot of the, I get all the town emails, like this wasn't one that sent the town sent out, unless I missed it. But the, it, it did not go out that we said. It didn't, I didn't, I went back through all of my emails. So maybe there's a glitch in the system. That's fine. I, I get it, right? But I think just to be more of putting this out there, because I think there are more families, again, to know that they have the option to, to request from the superintendent to move and just having more communication, as we've talked about earlier, with the families to be involved in this process. Whether or they decide to come or not, and there's only the few of us that are here, it is what it is. But to allow people that option to know that their voice can be heard from you and we appreciate that you listen to us as, because we are the parents now and see how it is day to day, you know, with our kids. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So. Before, I think, but I don't see it anymore.
Maybe they'll. Are we done with everybody here? Yes. Okay, then we'll take our online person.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hi, yes.
Um, obviously we see your name. Could you give us your address, please?
Ninety-three Franklin Road.
Thank you.
Um, I just have a wondering, I know that Hope kids are the ones that are always look to be moved and that Hope is a title one school. Um, if we keep moving kids from Hope, won't that affect any teachers that are, uh, employed with federal title one funding, uh, going forward? If we keep moving students from our school to the other school, will other like interventionists and stuff get affected?
Good question.
We get the money because of.
I'm sorry, Bobby, if you don't mind, I, I want the superintendent to answer her question.
We get the money based on the poverty rate in that school. Um, so, and title one's probably gonna have its own issues, um, separate and apart, um, from the issues that it has now, but, um, I, I guess potentially it could, um, but it may not, uh, certainly, um, we're not looking to cut, um, services, uh, title services from the students at Hope. And honestly, we added, um, a coach at Hope, um, that no other school has, um, in the district. So we've looked to put additional supports out there, not remove supports.
Did that answer your question?
Yes, sorry. I just wanted to bring attention to that. If like we keep moving more children from Hope to the other school, it will skew the.
So you understand it's not a numbers game? It has to do with, okay. So it doesn't, it doesn't, it may not affect it.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, so that ends the public comment section. Let's bring it back to the school committee to decide where we want to go from here. Um, we have one more, um, budget meeting. Um, it's on a workshop, but we, um, we can discuss one more, we can discuss the budget one more time as of now at our April meeting. Um, I don't know if this school committee wants to have any more conversation about the second grade now. Or think about it and, um, come to a final conclusion on, at the April meeting.
I, I just wanna mention that April seventeenth or sixteenth, we have to present to the town. We finally got that date. Um, so we would have to have a special meeting, just so you know, if we don't vote on it, uh, next week.
Oh, yeah, no, we have to vote on it next week.
So yeah, so our next regularly scheduled school committee meeting, which is.
The fourth?
First. And then. Yeah, I know, I know. Like I really, and then, um, the stuff you said, the date for us to present to the budget committee?
It's the seventeenth, Thursday.
Seventeenth, Thursday.
We present to.
To the budget committee of the town. And I don't have a location yet.
Yeah, the, the meeting is, take, those meetings take place in the Hope Jackson, the, the old police station. Yeah, that Hope Jackson bought.
That's where it was last year.
Yeah, and that's where it's gonna be this year. So that's down in Hope, you know, with the Hope Jackson, and you know, the old police station that they've, that's where the, that's where that meeting from. That'll take place on the seventeenth. Time to be determined. Yes. I don't know if they zoom it.
They didn't zoom last year.
Say that again? I don't know if they zoom.
So these are the town budget committee meetings. They're not ours. They, we go at their request. I don't know. And I don't know if they're being zoomed or if they would allow for, um, I know the town council meetings, do, do they allow um, audience participation via Zoom? I know they're all televised. I don't, I think we're the, I could be wrong though. I'm not sure.
I think we are the, I, I don't know.
It's not required. Um, so I don't, I can't, we can certainly find out, um.
I would call the town council president. Reach out to the town council president and ask.
The budget committee meetings have already started, so I don't know if they've done already. I don't know if they're televising any of them.
I don't either. Um, so what? What does a town, what does the school committee want to do? Do we want to continue the, any more conversations? Or do we wanna, uh, think about what we've heard and then, um, decide if there's any more changes to this budget? Actually, are they, cause, because it would, if there's, I don't have any other changes to this budget other than I am thinking about the second grade teacher. Um, not sure where I land on that quite yet, but I'm thinking about it. And I have to have a final decision of just my one thought, um, at the next meeting. How does everyone else feel? Well, we're not voting on it tonight anyway. We're not voting tonight, but do we, are there any other changes that we wanna bring forward? Um, for, uh, Lori and Stephanie?
I guess my only piece is just to back to Lori and Stephanie, your comfort level on the, the, the reduction in the healthcare line. It's as deep as it is. That's, that's concerning. I mean, but again, if we put back there, we're taking from somewhere else.
I have, I have a couple of concerns. This budget is extremely tight, extremely tight. If that healthcare number doesn't pan out, we're in trouble. If, if, um, we are starting, um, teacher contract negotiations, we don't know where that is going to land. We have tried, uh, our best to anticipate um, and, uh, let the salary line reflect that increase. But all we have to be is a half a percent off. And again, we're in trouble. Cause that's our, that's one of our biggest drivers, that salary line.
Not just salary, but the, um.
Benefits. It's the whole, it's the whole ball of wax. So you know, tho, those are some things that keep me awake at night because I don't have any control over them. And if they increase, um, I'm, you're really talking about us being in a position where we have to freeze the budget thirty days in to school. Because we're gonna have to hold every single dollar. Based on those areas. And, and that takes away from things that they need at the buildings and things that we need for kids. So that, that worries me. I'm just gonna be honest.
Stephanie?
Asking your, yeah, I.
I agree. I also wanna mention again, the, um, tuitions and the outplaced transportation, uh, because we could have one tuition show up as we did right in between this budget cycle. And we're off a hundred and seven thousand dollars just for outgoing tuition. Never mind the transportation that goes with it.
I guess the flip side of that is, and I'm sure you've looked at it, do we have anyone aging out on the other end? Those, that was all taken into consideration. Okay.
I get, and next year, not this year.
Yeah, okay.
Are you talking about attrition?
No, I'm talking about with, when you, with like projecting what our, like Stephanie was speaking specifically to specialized students and that can fluctuate really. But there are kids that age out at certain points and move, you know what I mean? But that was taken into consideration when doing.
But there, there's attrition in here?
Cent, so it's very.
Three percent.
Aggressive.
So between three percent attrition and then three hundred thousand dollars and I.
Three hundred and sixty.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that three percent represents close to a half a million.
So if those teachers don't retire, then that's a half a million.
Superintendent has to find it.
So that's eight hundred and sixty thousand. That is, uh, a different risk than I was.
So in looking at that eight hundred and sixty thousand, um, of doing that, you know, I know we spoke to, there was the, the HR position that wasn't filled at one point. We've decided as a committee that that is something that needs to move forward. There's fifty grand off the bat right out of that. Do you know what I mean? Like we, this is something that is district wide required. We are so woefully behind in so many things as that, that there's something that needs to. So this attrition rate, this eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars would be a thing like what happened, like a savings last year when we cut a position at the high school, I think it was math last year, correct? Like, that's where a hundred thousand dollars came in, because we didn't have the students to fill that, that gap. Like, that's where a hundred thousand dollars came in, cause we didn't have the students to fill that, that gap, which again, could be whether it be, not be two kid, two at kindergartens at every school, or the, like changing classroom sizes, going from one to two, that's where that eight sixties number's coming from. Right? I mean, nobody's retiring every, like, our district is not that big. And, and correct me if I'm wrong, our district is not that big that we're gonna have a ma- max influx of retirees that are tenured top step teachers that we're gonna replace with people making substantially less and meet that money.
No, you won't, you'd have to have, you'd have to have sixteen teachers retire and lower step teachers come in.
For the difference.
Which is not, that's not possible.
Especially at the high school level, if you're, have a, a top step science teacher retire. You wanna bring, you're not gonna, going to want to bring in a, a step one science teacher, you're gonna want.
Depending on the area, if it's a hard to fill area, sometimes we have to hi- replace the top step with a top step, we don't have any choice.
No, and that's.
Yeah.
Would there be more comfort in, I, I guess it would just be, I don't know, there's any other place for cost savings. At this moment, do we wanna adjust the healthcare by, I mean, it would just go to a higher ask? I don't, I don't know how much higher it would bring it, I don't, you know, I don't. Other thoughts from anybody? I just don't wanna put us in a position to not succeed. I don't know, in the ten years that I've been here, I don't know that we've ever had to think about putting like a stop on things thirty day into a budget, do you know what I mean? Like that's.
That's not anything I've ever.
No, no, it's not, how do you function? How do you, yeah, that's just not. Do we bring up that ask? So we're not putting, I, I don't wanna set the expectations.
Just to be clear, already our increase, our budget increase is six point four percent. Our overall expenditure is has, is going up six point four percent.
But you, you say it's going up six point four percent.
Compared to last year.
I understand that, but our ask from the town is at, and I think Stephanie's done a very good job.
The ask is two point five, but don't think that they're not gonna see that.
But I think we've done a very good, and I think this may come back to the piece where we do have to act, like this is what our, we get, like, and I, I wasn't trying to argue with you, I can't go every year and ask for four percent, I'm not. But if we're asking for two point five, and if this six hundred thousand, if we're, we're already coming up short in all these ways, we're, we're not doing our job to say, hey, like, we need another, like, maybe instead of like taking it down by three hundred thousand, it's a hundred and fi- I don't know the answer. But I'm just trying to, um, it's, so you're saying because our state aid increased, I, I don't, I don't mean to put words, I'm, I'm not putting words in my mouth, we're gonna be penalized by the town because those, like, those, those, they're giving us more money.
That's the story we need to tell. So they're gonna see that we're, we're a one million, seven hundred and six increase over last year.
Where's that coming from? That's, where, where's one million? I don't know that number.
That's the monetary amount, I believe she's referencing, that goes along with the operational percentage, uh, ye- over last year, what we asked for expenditure-wise to now, so it's not the local appropriation, it's like the bottom number.
Oh, okay, all right, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about state aid, so, oh, gone.
And that, and from that is about one million, four hundred-ish, probably a little bit more, comes from things that we can't, those things that we can't control that we already talked about.
Right.
In there's embedded those risks that we're talking about, the three percent attrition. And, you know, that's another half a million right there, and then the healthcare, which is three hundred and sixty thousand, that's a little risk, and that's, that's embedded in the, the one million, four hundred. Um, I'm, I'm just pointing out things to think about, that the, that the town council's gonna be looking at and understanding.
Sure.
They're gonna say, you, you, you're getting, you're getting almost, you know, a million dollars more this year than last year from all these other funding things.
Yeah, from, from what other funding things?
Um, state aid, M L L, high cost special ed, transportation, oh.
It's all, it's all one figure.
Yeah.
So, but we're, so.
But I would argue, so I'm gonna put.
Yeah.
A little bit.
Please.
I would argue that it's not a million, it's closer to a half a million, cause it's seven hundred thousand, which is smack dab in the middle. So, I, if they, you know, want to argue with us that we're getting a million, that's the high end, I'm gonna argue it's a half a million.
But the other, so, but the big jump was that those other pieces that, and, and Stephanie, if you can help me understand this, um, the, the million, like, so we're looking at our, the state aid is increased by seven hundred thousand dollars.
Today, that's the anticipated.
Exactly.
We're not pushing.
Anticipated. And where are you coming up with one point four?
I'm looking at.
Like, that's what I'm not.
So she, I believe.
One, four, oh, go ahead.
Sorry, I think I know what you're talking about, I don't wanna speak for you.
Go ahead.
But I think you're talking about the operational expenditures?
Okay.
So she's talking about year over year, um, what we expend, I have a graph, hold on, okay.
Do I have it, or is it a different one?
It's just in my notes.
That's not, yeah, no.
Um, so she's saying this year, over last year, our overall expenditures, what we're spending is six point three five percent over last year. Whereas in F Y twenty four, twenty five, it was three point nine eight percent for the, the prior year, and in twenty three, twenty four, it was four point five five percent. But remember, we had the funky fifteen month year?
Yeah.
So I feel like that's just, I don't even wanna look at that year. But I mean, I think we have excellent reason to say, look at all these fixed expenses we have that we can't do anything about, and they're going up. This is, so that money that we're getting in is gone and some by the time, so that's why.
That's the story I wanna tell.
That's why our percentage is so high.
The charts and graphs and the story.
I'll go back to your original question, Erica.
Did I have?
Or somebody?
I don't remember.
I forget, but I thought I heard, does anybody on the committee have any further direction for Stephanie or I? Do you want us to do anything between now and Tuesday to this budget?
Do you have all the classrooms incoming set at this point? I know kindergarten is fluid right now, but all of the other classes are set? Numbers?
Yes.
Okay. There's no decrease in any staff in any of the other classrooms?
The only other change that was made is, and I have, um, shared and explained this in your weekly updates. Um, the elementary principals met with the curriculum director to talk about scheduling at the elementary buildings to make sure that the spec- schedules were equitable and unified, and that all the specials were equitable across buildings. And that caused them to be able to consolidate some of the itinerant teachers. So, um, they have, they made that recommendation to me, and I supported that.
I don't have anything um, that I want you to do to change this budget at this time. How about you, Colleen?
I. We meet again real soon.
We meet Tuesday.
So just for clarification, you want me to put this into the PowerPoint presentation and present that Tuesday, correct?
Yes. Anyone else? Thank you, everyone, for coming and sharing your thoughts, like I said.
Oh, good lord. Just the capital.
I was ready to go.
Well, I'm ready too.
I'm not done yet.
Get it, staff. I was ready to leave.
So.
This can be very, this can be very quick.
Do you mind pulling up the, okay, thank you. Last year, we asked for five hundred thousand in capital appropriation and received a cut of seventy three thousand, seven hundred dollars. That seventy three thousand, seven hundred dollar cut, although it may seem small, could have realized another twenty nine thousand in reimbursements, allowing us to tackle a project or two we have awaiting in q- in queue. The current proposal you're looking at is that we ask again for the five hundred thousand in capital appropriation to allow us a two hundred thousand dollar reimbursement in aid, this equates to seven hundred thousand annually to maintain our school buildings. The proposal also has a three hundred thousand deduction from our W B dental fund balance, which is in a surplus currently over eight hundred thousand. This is one-time money that will have sixty thousand moved to health fund balance to meet twenty percent co-share requirements and offset that balance positively. This funding will boost our capital budget for some critical one-time expenses by a hundred and fifty thousand. Needs are labeled, as you can see on the sheet, uh, I just put W B, I'm gonna take that off, but that, that was just for presentation, for reference on where that money would be used. We do need a new truck and maintenance. Um, we have plumbing and electrical projects that are critical.
And there was also a piece of equipment for the grounds that.
Oh, something else, just, didn't you just, the Gator?
Yeah.
We're taking care of that.
Oh.
Currently. We can't wait.
Do you remember why we were cut that money?
No, I'm, no, and it was my understanding that we were approved.
And then it happened afterwards.
So the ask is for five hundred thousand, and then we would supplement that with an additional two hundred and my head, two hundred and forty thousand because of.
The sixty's gotta go, yep.
It took me a minute.
And we have plenty of projects.
Yes, 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 but it just, I think it's important too, that we're showing that we're using on.
Yes.
And the money that we're using for money that we're supplementing into that, we wouldn't, it's not part of a capital project, so we wouldn't be getting state reimbursement on that.
We will.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, we will, okay.
So, and I think one of them will get bonuses, so, yeah, trying to be strategic.
Yeah, we love it.
So that also is a story we really need to tell of, as, as we know, and as, I mean, there's new town council members, so they may not know that the, this, the reimbursement that we get, it's like free money.
Well, that wasn't being done, it's been a while now, I can't keep using that thing, but we went years and years without seeking any type of reimbursement.
But it's, it's free money.
Yes.
Yeah, and over the past five years, we've received over two million dollars in reimbursements. I mean, some of it goes back to the town, if it's a bond.
Yeah.
Sure. But, and so that's a good faith effort to us saying, you know, here you go, to them, I'm sorry, it's like.
And our infrastructure is old, it's, it's what it is, but we have to do the best we can to maintain and upkeep and, yeah.
So we're taking three hundred thousand from our, um, health fund balance, one time only.
Yes.
I'm dental.
Putting it towards our capital, nothing in operations. Other, yeah. Sorry, I'm saying. Yes.
I, I, correct.
I don't have any changes to this. Any other comments from the school committee?
I would just like to, um, to add, I'm sure we all saw it on, um, Facebook, um, the passing of June Gugliami, who was a teacher at North Situit for decades and a member of the school committee for a decade, so I'm thinking maybe, I know this wasn't a real meeting, at our next meeting, we could do like a moment of silence or an honor of we've done, um, in the past for people, so I just wanted to kinda get that on the agenda.
Perfect.
She was a hoot. June ninety.
Seven.
Seven, yeah, bless her.
We did put out a press release.
Yeah, I did, yeah, thank you, but I just, I don't think it was appropriate, cause it was a subcommittee, but I think at our next meeting, we could just have a, a moment for June, she'll get a, she'll get a kick. She'll get, no, no cupcakes, June doesn't want a cupcake. Maybe a drink, June would have some glass of wine.
Um, before we go, is there anyone in the community that has any questions on the capital budget? Glad I asked. Name and address.
Hi, Penny Melphy, ninety Rockland Road. Um, I have questions about the proposed trail that's going, what, where is the funding for that coming?
That is not a project.
Okay, so the school committee is not putting any money towards that?
No.
How do the kids currently get down to the field? It's my understanding that they're bussed down there.
They are.
Where does that come out of the budget?
Uh, transportation.
On the transportation?
Yeah.
How much is spent for that particular?
I don't know.
It's a daily rate, so if the bus is going here, there, and everywhere for the day, it's just one rate.
I don't think there's any, I'm not gonna say there's no cost, it's the, and this goes back way back, as kids were walking down there before, it was very dangerous, it was this. So it's been, there are placed on existing buses that are already going in that direction, cause obviously our base, I, I don't, I could be misspoken, but this is a story.
I would have to ask specifically, you very well could be right.
Yeah, there's not a bus that's used for athletes to get that, that unless things have changed, like in the last year. Um, but kids were walking down there, we're like this, this is that, and then there was this trail, I don't, we don't.
There is no trail.
No, and that was a whole other thing going way back when, and we said, no, we can't, like, we actually had a policy, I don't know if we still have that.
There, there is.
I think there's a.
Conservation.
I, that's new, that's.
That, I understand that, but I, I have a lot of concerns about that, because you're trading off a, a safe way of them getting to the, to the field right now, for what I consider a very unsafe way by have, going through the woods and I've got.
So we, we right now have a, and we'll double check on this, that there was a policy that was enacted by the school committee that should, that kids were not allowed to walk to Manning Field. Again, it's our policy, I can't, I, you know, I'm not, we're not out there policing them, doing.
Seen the kids.
But that's what we do, so, again, with the conservation committee, I don't wanna speak to their project, but I know that we can refer back to our policy, what it's, that they're, when they're leaving the schools, we would still have say over whether or not they're utilizing this field, and I don't know if that's what the intended purpose is or not, I don't.
Well, that's what they've proposed as their intended thing, it, it is a, it is, the point of that trail is to get the kids down there, but.
Okay, so that's probably, that's a topic for discussion.
I thought it was a land trust, a conservation.
Yeah, but they're.
They made a trail.
The, the whole, the whole sell on that was because they'll get, the, it'll be a trail that the kids can then get safely down to.
I didn't see that.
But that's a case, yeah, there are trails that they're putting over near the, um, on Daddy Meeting House.
Yes.
So those trails are open around the field, as well as the playground, everything else. No, there, there are trails that currently exist, and they're probably so overgrown, cause I used to walk them all the time.
They're completely not existing anymore.
Yeah.
They, parts of it are, because cross-country team uses it.
Well, that's, that's down at that, that.
That part, so there were, the, from the school, there is a, an existing track or, um, um, trail that, my, when my daughter, cause she was here and we went through it, so that's what I said, it's probably because we, I, I don't, I've never seen the policy, to be honest with you, but they stopped using it because of safety.
We have a safety policy because of that we did not want the kids going through the walk, so if in fact, this, this trail is being designed for that purpose, which I don't know if it is or it isn't, but if it is going to be, then that would require a change in school committee policy, which, which we are not aware of, do you know what I mean? So it's, that I do know.
No one, they would walk.
No one has approached the superintendent, nor the school committee, about the students u- utilizing that trail to get down to, to the field, because obviously that.
Presented at a council meeting.
Uh, on February thirteenth.
Yeah, I watched it.
So they got, they, they've already gotten the approval for it, like, to go ahead.
Part of that Situit land trust is buying a chunk of land and, and the ease, the conservation, they're working together to, to create, but I thought it was hiking trails, I didn't hear the kids.
No, that, that was to connect the field, so that, then they can use it as a public access as well.
Oh.
So you, you provide a lot of.
Hear that.
So the, I'm one of those neighbors that it's actually going to affect, um, so all of us there do not, are not in favor of this trail, but that there are safety issues, I think, for students, because the safest, if you're, if your priority as the school committee should be the safety of the students as the first and foremost.
Yes.
Then busing them is the only answer, because you're going through a forest that's filled with trees that are now a hundred years old and falling down every, you know, on a nice day, they're falling down.
But Colleen Pinner-Gass said, it's a policy, um, that the school will follow, that they get bussed down, and we have no intention of changing that policy, so they can build whatever trail they want, but we have a policy on how our students get there. Does that make sense?
That does make sense, it is not what it's being sold for by either the.
For once, we don't have anything to do with that.
No, and they should, they, that's a great point, and we can certainly reach out, or if they encourage them to reach out to us, because that's not, we would, that would be a whole other that we'd be involving the superintendent and the building principals, and it would be a policy change.
When I, I went to the, the land trust meeting, and there, well, I just wanted to know where exactly, I mean, they, they show on the map where it is that's gonna be along our property lines, but it doesn't say where it ties into the, the current uh, cross-country trail or the high school, so, and they were, oh, was up at the high school, that would be up to them where they put, put the field. Like, I've never heard of anyone planning a, a middle of a trail only in.
Yeah.
Uh, either end, so it is.
Well, being a, being a, um, a budget meeting that, that can be. Well, being a, being a um, a budget meeting, that, that can be something, maybe you can have a, a separate conversation with the superintendent or any school committee member.
Get the, the budget question.
Yeah.
Kind of answer.
No, that was a good, I was hoping.
Get on the agenda for the, the, the regular um, for, for that to be a.
For public comment.
The, this path, you want that on the agenda?
But it doesn't have anything. School committee, so we couldn't have a say on it. What I would do is address it with either the land trust. They're the ones that are making the decisions to it and not us.
Yeah, so do I.
Presented.
Yeah.
First, first we heard of it.
Well, Lambro, one seventeen Trim Town, you might want to check today, I don't know if it was a girl softball.
Is this a budget question?
No.
Budget only, please.
Okay, but they were walking down Rockland.
Okay, thank you. Any other budget questions? And a motion to adjourn?